Okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we're gonna open the meeting now with the Fudge Allegiance. But we're gonna stand in first.
Fudge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, first order of business is public comments. Vic, you gotta come over here and tell us who you are.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I have quite a number of comments to make. It might take a little time.
You're not having to wait.
And I'll make them and I will not discuss, okay?
All right.
I would like to know, number one, I asked about a ruling from Town Council about a possible conflict of interest on the StanTech consulting. I don't know whether you requested that of her or not. I know I can't because she's not my Town Council, she's yours.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
I attended a Finance Committee meeting on the 22nd of October downstairs in the Campbell Memorial Room, and I was quite amazed to find out that we have educated people who evidently have no use for a dictionary or no use for a definition of a word, okay?
Okay.
The other thing that distressed me, as I say, I'm gonna make the comments, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go back and forth, all right? The other thing that distressed me is the Finance Committee had a meeting the previous week on the 15th, and already voted a no vote not to recommend the petitioned article for the citizens of the town to mean it, and I, I find it pretty tough because it seems to me you would wanna get people involved in town government even though you may not agree with what their opinion or what they're trying to do, okay?
I don't understand your point.
What's that?
I don't, I don't understand the point you're making. Like, they had a, they had a discussion about it and they voted-
They had a, the Finance Committee had a meeting on October 15th.
Correct.
At that meeting, the Finance Committee voted six to nothing not to recommend-
Okay.
-the petitioned article on the special town meeting.
Okay.
Now, I attended that meeting and I had a chance to express my opinion, but if I had known that they had already made a no vote, I wouldn't have attended because they've already made up their mind, and it's no matter what anybody in that meeting that night would say, the Finance Committee was not gonna change their opinion. The other thing I find that's rather strange is that I asked about the charter being, you know, the Town Council should have no opinion on the article. Here's a definition from the American Heritage Dictionary for Except with the exclusion of, were it not for the fact that, to leave out, exclude. Now, I don't know how you can interpret that statement, that definition in a dictionary any other way, but evidently the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectment has already done that. The other thing I find that if the Finance Committee was not biased for this article, I have never seen from the Finance Committee in all the years I've been hanging around this town building this much verbiage for one article. And let me, let me just give you some ancient history. We had a Town Council named Joe Rabel. We had a Town Administrator named Mike Giannonis, who this room is memorialized. And I was at a town meeting one night, and I was informed by Town Council and also by the Town Administrator that the Finance Committee did not have to give written recommendations for the articles on each and every single town warrant, whether special or regular. A week later, there was a letter from Town Council to the Chairman of the Finance Committee that he had researched the charter and found that that's, that was the truth. So now we get comments from the Finance Committee, and we get 'em like three or four pages long.
Okay.
Does that tell you something? It tells me something. It tells me that no matter what we do, we're not gonna make much progress. The-
Vic, I, I can just tell you that every article that's come before the town since I've been here in this chair is, has had a Finance Committee recommendation. As a matter of fact, we've, we've taken some articles and pushed them back and had to open a meeting at a Town Hall, at a Town Meeting recently, had to have them open a meeting to make a recommendation. So I know that they've, they've made recommendations on every article since I've been here. Would you agree with that, David?
Um, I know that there-
I think they do.
I know that there are some issues with them not making some recommendations along the way, but I don't know. That's all, that's all relevant to what Vic's talking about.
If I may rebut your statement, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
The Finance Committee, more times than not, will have information relative to a town meeting article, and they should by all means give an opinion well before a town meeting so the citizens can survey it and find out if they wanna speak on the article or not, either for or against. And I don't believe a recommendation at a town meeting is proper, okay? It should be well before that, and I think if you read the charter closely, you'll find that they shouldn't be doing it, but they've been doing it for quite a while now. And the reason you're getting this, this written stuff is because of the exception I made. It's like, just like the nameplates in front of you people. I used to come to meetings here and I didn't know the people, and I yelled for a long time about, "How about a nameplate so we know who the hell we're talking to?" You know, we have many new people move into town that have been elected for office, okay? But I don't believe Town Council's opinion should carry any weight in this petitioned article, and also I, I find it really upsetting that our elected town officials take umbrage at the fact that the citizens wanna be involved in town government and you kinda slap us down. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know anybody that's in this, in this room that's taken umbrage with the fact that somebody's created a citizen's petition, and I don't think anyone in this room has said publicly that they agree or disagree with the citizen's petition, that I know of. I do know that Town Council more or less reviews every article that we put through.
Except petitions article, it's right in the charter. I don't know how you can read it any other way. I don't believe her opinion should carry any weight for this special town meeting, and I think she, she should probably be chastised and maybe somebody that gave all of her association or somebody at a higher level of government that might have bombed the earnest attorney of that.
I'll see if we can't have her drawn and quoted on Thursday, but as of now, it is what it is. Any other public comments this evening? No? Okay. Thank you, Vic.
You're welcome.
I still don't know what-
Forgive me the time, we appreciate it.
Your time is our time, or vice versa. All right, acceptance of minutes. Number two, we have to accept the minutes, or we can, or if we cannot accept the minutes of October 16th, 2018, and I make a motion that we move to accept and approve the October 16th, 2018 meeting minutes as shown. Do a second.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions about the October 16th minutes as shown? Okay, all those in favor of acceptance? Agenda item three, the correspondence items. In this week, we have several, and they are A through L, and I make a motion that we move to accept the list of eight correspondence items as shown, A through L.
I only have A through H.
H, yeah.
Mine has L.
You got an L?
I got A through L.
I, J, K, and L.
Yeah, I got H only.
Oh, wait, oh, hold on. No.
No, H only.
I only have the H.
Well, all right.
Yeah, but I don't only have the H as well.
Strike that. My has an H, has an H.
Is there an L, like, you have?
It's an L, right?
No, that's a-
No, I don't have an L.
Okay.
Probably just a typo from the previous agenda.
Okay. So now we're gonna move to accept the list of eight correspondence items, A through H, as presented. Have a second.
Second.
Does anybody have any comments on the eight, A through H, items?
I had a question on the golf course from Sterling Management Update. I don't know if we've been in touch with them. I would be interested in seeing, now that we have kind of an itemization of the revenue flows for the past year, of the $40,000 plus that they claim they've made in alleged repairs to offset the rent, if they could produce that. I just think it would be helpful to understanding the P and L of the golf course.
Yeah, we can ask. And then, as you can see, I noted that an audit is scheduled for the golf course in February.
Oh, awesome. Good.
So, so that'll be obviously to a micro degree, but we can, we can get you an itemized list of what the $40,000-
That might come up in the audit too, I assume, then, too.
Correct, but in the meantime, we still provide you what we have.
So, following along on Melissa's question, it says there's a, it indicates there's a balance of 20-something thousand remaining available for capital improvements.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be their rent? Wouldn't they owe us that money?
Right, 'cause revenues come in at so much, you subtract all those expenses, and what's left should be the difference, and if it's positive, it should go back to the town.
Like, if they, if there's a balance available for capital improvements, that would mean that in there, that would mean that that money should come to the town at some point.
Aaron's raising his hand.
Yeah, we can speak to Aaron, but I, I'm not that familiar with the contract well enough to be able to speak to, to the, to this at this point, but I will certainly look into it as I plan to. But we can have Aaron speak to it now.
Yeah.
This is Aaron McClesco, DPW Director.
We typically roll over, or reinvest the $40,000, and if we don't spend all $40,000, we'll roll into the next year's Campbell projects.
Okay.
So the money doesn't come back to the town or stay with the golf course, but we keep track of that. Usually we go over the $40,000, but we haven't spent it all, and we have a couple months left of work still to be done.
All right.
Thanks.
I did my inspection today. I didn't notice anything out of place, just so you know.
Thanks.
Couple leaves, though.
Leaves?
Leaves, leaves, leaves. All right. Anybody else have any questions or concerns about A through H and the correspondence items?
I'm, just a quick clarification on the H part. I was kind of confused about, so what is going on with those two buildings, the two homes?
Right now, what is going on?
Yeah.
Well, nothing until, until an MOA is approved and then the course of action is-
Oh, I got you. So it's all part of the MOA?
That's correct. So it's, I, my understanding is Historic Commission just wants to be able to make it known that, that they have examined the currently proposed MOA, and I think it's, it's the same language from the past as well, that they look to, to have those buildings preserved.
Preserve, okay.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor? Thank you all. Next up is our consent agenda for this week. And the consent agenda consists of A through F, and I make a motion to move to approve the list of six consent items as presented, A through F.
I second it.
So we have... So the, the three zoning bylaw, the zoning bylaw things, those are gonna be, where are they gonna go to a town meeting to be decided?
Yes, well, my understanding is you'd be endorsing those to go back to the planning board. Bill Nemser is prepared to speak to that, but I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that you move into the public hearing.
Okay.
Bill, can you confirm, I'm just questioning the, the process here, that there's an obligation, if the planning board wants to present an article relative to a zoning change, that it's, there's an obligation for the board to authorize that? I don't remember doing that in the past.
Yes, it is. If, it's kind of a quirky part of the law, if, even if it originates with the planning board, it's, has to be submitted to the Board of Selectmen to be referred back.
For approval for a public hearing, okay. Maybe it's because we've, in the past, approved the article and then the hearing is held after that?
In this, the, the process would be that it comes back to planning board and then it will come back to you at the board.
So we'll get it again, even as an article?
Right, right, but I would imagine that, you know, after the hearings, there, there's going to be some sort of adjustments in each of them, and typically, as long as, you know, the, there, if anything more restrictive, then they're just kind of as part of the process. It's, it's strange, but it's what we got. And I, just to forewarn the board that I, a lot of this, these zoning requests here are cleanups where we found, you know, we're going through the whole zoning bylaw from the start, and there's gonna be things such as numbering and, and things like that that will require, I, I start back with you again, so you'll probably see me again before our next town meeting, with some minor stuff, and I confirmed with Town Council, and that's the way they wanna do it, just so everything's by the book, but that's why.
All right. Anybody else need any more explanation from Bill?
I have other questions, but I know we have to move into the other part. I can actually follow up later. It's not a problem.
Sure. Whatever's good.
Okay, you wanna delay voting on this till then?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, then, all in favor of the consent items? All right, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
She's gonna follow up with you, so.
I will follow up with you.
Sure.
Be prepared.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna get to a, open the public hearing. I'm gonna read the notice as posted, and then we'll, we'll get right into it. Wednesday, November 7th, 2018, at 7:15 PM, Maynard Town Hall, Michael J. Giannonis Meeting Room, Room 201, 195 Main Street, Maynard, Mass., 01754. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Maynard, the Cable Television License Issuing Authority, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 7th, 2018, at 7:15 PM at the Maynard Town Hall, the Michael J. Giannonis Meeting Room, Maynard, Massachusetts, 01754, pursuant to 207 CMR 3.05 and any applicable cable television renewal license, laws, regulations, or requirements regarding the renewal of the cable television license of Verizon New England, Inc. Any applications, reports, statements, proposed or draft cable license and/or amendments in the possession of the town to be considered at the hearings shall be available for public inspection and reproduction at a reasonable fee at the Office of the Board of Selectmen during regular Town Hall orders, Town, Town Hall hours. Board of Selectmen, Town of Maynard, October 11th, 2018. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Sir.
Do we still have a cable committee? And do we have a, do we have a recommendation from the cable committee?
I'm not familiar with it.
Cable Advisory Committee, we, I don't know if it's staffed.
I'm not, I'm not aware of one.
Yeah.
They're supposed to have one.
I go, we can do that if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, but I would recommend we move forward with the contract at this time.
Okay.
You don't have any recommendation from the committee that's supposed to be duly there, and you don't have a committee?
But if there's no committee, if there's, if we don't have a staffed committee, it's tough to ask them to have, to make a comment on it. And I'm not aware of a requirement for that. You may be right, but I'm not aware of a requirement for that committee to chime in on this particular issue.
They're, they're supposed to make a recommendation to the board for a license renewal.
Okay.
But we don't have an active-
Sounds like we don't have a committee.
We don't have an active committee, correct. We have one established, it's just not, it's just not staffed.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so Verizon, you guys are up?
Hello, I can introduce myself if you'd like. William Solomon, I'm the Town's Special Cable Counsel, and I handled the, the both of Verizon and the Comcast license 10 years ago, and I was brought back and worked with the town this time, and with your assistant and interim Town Administrator, who was extremely helpful. So if you'd like, I can, we also have here, if we can have John Harrington, who's Counsel for Verizon.
Okay.
And we can give you a little background and see if you're ready to vote.
So, just for the record, who, who actually worked on the contract?
Sure.
Yourself?
I, I did as, as your Counsel and did most of the work, but, but your, your act, your, your assistant Town Administrator, then became interim, was intimately involved in the, in the process, and also, but, but I did, you know, most of the work along with him.
Okay.
So, you know, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, and maybe we could just begin with John Harrington of Verizon, because he can discuss Verizon's interest in, in renewing the license. They've been a good partner with the town, providing competition to the incumbent company, and John can give you some background about why they'd like a renewal and a little bit about this license, and then I can speak about the license and answer any questions if you'd like.
Okay.
I'll identify myself. My name is John Harrington from the firm Kirby Harrington and Pinkert in Boston. Verizon had made a decision to continue in the cable TV business, but it had to change some of the standards of its contracts due to the changing nature of the technology and the competition of internet service providers and the internet format of gaining television product. So, based upon that, they reduced the term from 10 years to five years, and because of that, we, Verizon decided that, given that 10 years was the norm, they did increase the amount of money that was being contributed by Verizon via the contract. There was a bit of a premium that was put on the finances on that basis. So, the PEG grant that we have agreed upon is a fixed amount, $14,500 each and every year, for a total of $72,500, plus one-half of 1% of the gross revenue. So if the gross revenue goes up, you'll get a higher factor on the percentage. With respect to the PEG access support, that has been increased from 4.2%, 4.25% of the gross annual revenue, and it's gone up to 4.85%. And the other feature that we think is a, a big feature that Verizon has agreed to is to include not just the three PEG access channels, but there's also a fourth that will be in high definition. So that's a, a very attractive feature.
What's that last, what will be?
There'll be a fourth-
A fourth PEG, a fourth local access.
Right, but it'll be a high-definition channel, so you get it in that quarter of the spectrum.
And, and I can just give background, as you know, the, the PEG, of course, means public education, government, and access of community programming. The town will have three channels. It has two now that operates, will have three, public education, government. The Town's program is currently run through the schools. Mark Menasian, who does an excellent job, they also run a radio station. And then going forward, the board will work with that program to figure out how you wanna improve and expand public and educational government access. There may be more government meetings you want coverage of, maybe some public service announcements are punchy and interesting, watching folks train in the town. What I found in working across the state is that communities that have good community television, that show community groups and sports and local economy, those communities are communities that have a sense of pride and a sense of working together as a community, and if, what you find is that, that is reflective of communities that, that work well and that are successful economically. You know, they have studies that show if you just change a little bit of shopping and bring it into your locality, that has a tremendous effect on your local economy and your local tax base. So, this license, as Attorney Harrington stated, is raising the percentage of support for, for PEG access or related purposes to the 4.85% from 4.25%, which will add a material amount, depending on current, on current revenues, that would, there's a number here, that would be approximately $18,000 more per, per year. In addition, the, is the capital side. Of course, operating money can be used for capital, but the capital side buys cameras and editors and consoles and everything that, that you use to run PEG access. That is gonna be a stated percentage of gross revenue plus a fixed dollar amount. The percentage is a half percent plus the $14,500, which is Attorney Harrington said, has somewhat of a premium for Verizon because of the five-year license. That's, that's good, that's excellent funding going forward. The last license, the, both, the both licenses, including Verizon, had excellent capital amounts. This amount is a little more than the last license. It's a five-year period, it's more than, you know, proportionally, it's, it's more. And that's important, as we discussed, because, you know, not only does this relate to getting the message out, but as you know, you have students, you have generations that learn and will have jobs that have video components, and that equipment is important to train the youth of Maynard, and seniors and others, but the youth of Maynard in using video, which is instrumental in not only video-related jobs, but in any job going forward in a media age. The high definition, it's been the, something that all PEG access entities have been looking for at a point in time where everything else is in high definition. It's important to have high definition for, there'll be one channel for a channel you select of your three programs. And, you know, that will allow people to, you know, to, to watch and have a clearer picture, and you can decide on whether P, E, and G, or how that's done, or a whole another channel, and that's to Verizon's credits that it came to the table and provided that. So, additionally, I won't go bore you with the legalese, but there, there are a number of legal and policy protections in this license that are unique for, you know, for Maynard and for other folks that, that I work with, that try to protect the town going forward from, on issues like bundling of services, what proportion of that bundle is cable, because we get a percentage of cable revenue, we don't get a percentage of internet and telephone revenue. There's also provisions that if going forward, there's PEG access, video-on-demand, you know, video-on-demand, which they have for other channels, if that's something that they, Verizon provides in the Commonwealth, they have to come to Maynard and discuss providing that here, and also providing PEG access on the, on the electronic program guide, so that the different programming, the Selectmen's meeting, whatever it may be, will be on the program guide, you could set your, your video recorder or something else to record that. So on those issues, if they provide it elsewhere in the Commonwealth, they have to come here and discuss providing that. So all in all, this is a very strong license on dollars. It's a very strong license, and a give-and-take on language. I appreciate Verizon working fairly. They had their paradigm, we tried to meet that paradigm of years and some other, other aspects, but they also then understood what we said was important and came to a, a good agreement. So I think it's a strong agreement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you, you might have on it.
Where in this contract is the term?
It's, it began five years, so it, it'll be up, up front on, I don't have the, pull it out, but Article, Article 2, I believe it is. And five years running from November 25th, which is the expiration of the last license, for a, for a five-year term. There, there is a provision in there that with respect to providing a better deal to others who might use the public way and provide video, but that provision was modified in a way that I believe the town has protected, and in the event that were to occur, that Verizon would have a chance to negotiate this with the town. If they were unhappy with that result, they could give you a three-year out on their part. They don't expect that to happen at a five-year license. The language we have in our Maynard license is, is, I think, far more protective than any other communities in the Commonwealth, you know, that I'm not working with, and that would require that it be a agreement like a cable license or a cable franchise or similar agreement, not just any agreement to use the public way, not a grant of location- agreement, not just any agreement to use the public way, not a grant of location for some person to use it, but an agreement similar to a cable agreement. But with that very unlikely out, which would take three years, this is a solid five-year agreement. And again, I think what's particularly important is that we asked for and frankly required a premium, as I mentioned, on the capital, a reasonable premium, but a premium over what otherwise would have been paid, and Verizon agreed to that. We've tried to reach an agreement generally on it, and I think that is a reasonably fair trade-off for the five-year term.
Couple of points. First off, full disclosure, I am a Verizon customer, so I utilize the services. And I am also a somewhat of a local government nerd where I watch, I watch a lot of the PEG stuff.
A lot of people do.
And what I wonder is, I'm pleased that we have, I don't watch our meetings that often because I sit through them, but I do watch Acton and I do watch Boxborough, but why do we have Hingham? And is there any way to get a more local town than Hingham, which is about 50 miles away? Hingham is on our local access, and I don't really know much of what's going on. I'm not really all that interested. They're nice people, they seem to be, but I'm not interested in Hingham. So, if somebody could look into that. We got Wallfam, which is nice, but Hingham is one I do not understand. I'd much rather get, you know, we get Stowe also, but I'd much rather get Hudson or, you know.
I'll bring that back. I think the answer probably goes to the architecture of the legacy telephone system where they have a central office, and they've had to adapt that to support the video product also. So, I'm sure it's a technical issue. I'll see if there's any.
If there's any way to get us a more local community, that would be helpful because it's nice to see what's going on in the other towns. The other thing is, I'm hopeful that, you know, there's been a lot of concern expressed that I've heard about the cost of, and I know this isn't your thing, but maybe you can bring it back to your client, the cost of Verizon services going up dramatically, especially recently. And I hope that some of these goodies that Maynard is seeing from this contract are not then tossed back on the Verizon customer, so that in effect, Maynard's getting the benefit of Verizon customers paying additional tax.
I can answer, yes, I can answer that part of it. And I have heard about their rate increases at Verizon. It's, you know, fair and good that you brought that up. You know, the increases they had recently, of course, is unrelated to this license. So, generally speaking, you know, PEG access is a very small portion of what their costs are their decision. I tell towns, if you ask, and remember, you're getting compensated, albeit in Massachusetts, for PEG access because a company is using your road and that you take that road, you maintain it, you police it, you insure it, you clean it, do all of those things. And as if it was your property individually, and someone, a cable company wanted to use your property, you would say, well, you need to pay me. So, the question would be, if, when, with a fiduciary duty, would one want to sit on a board and say to a company that's earning a profit on this road, well, just use it, don't pay me? You know, if you do that for yourself and you believe government should be run a little bit like a business, then you would do that in your responsibility as selectmen and select board members. And so, with that, there's also the fact that, you know, they set their rate upon a lot of competitive factors, like with everyone who has, that they have to decide how much they can raise it. They, as John has said, they have new video competition going forward, so that historically speaking, that getting a good cable license, getting compensation for the use of your public way is not what drives cable rates, a whole lot of factors. And congratulations to this board and predecessors. The most important thing that this board historically has done and is doing now is having a competitor. As much as in a two-company world, even though there's newer competition, it's not a perfect competitive situation, by having another company, and a lot of folks don't have Verizon and would like to, by having that company, you did far more in that company offering deals and specials, albeit, you know, you might prefer it to be a little clearer to folks what's available, but that did far more to keep some constraint on price than if you said to the company, use the public way and don't give us a penny. In that kind of case, they'd charge you probably the same thing, and I know that from other experience. But because you're now renewing a license and providing that competition in a non-exclusive license, this board is doing the best thing possible within your limited authority to try to keep rates at a lower increase. And so, that's to the Maynard's credit originally, by working with Verizon and Verizon's credit, by having them come to Maynard, where there are a lot of communities that would love to have Verizon FiOS, but will not.
Thank you.
Great.
I have a question about the money, real quick. You had said that there was a set number of $72,500 or something to that factor.
It's over five years. The annual amount is 14.5.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the percentage, the 4.85% of?
Gross revenue.
Of the gross revenue.
Right.
Do you have any kind of estimate of what that is?
I can give you the numbers, yeah, yeah. So, the, and the revenue's changing, and some of the revenue's going down for different reasons, both people, some people, you don't have lowering of subscribers yet, but you might have people who shave a little bit of the cord. And sometimes there's some recalculation on their part that we have to keep an eye on. But let me give you the number, if you give me a second. Let me go to the Verizon number here. Yeah, 100, yeah, so it would be approximately 118, yeah, you have 12, that's the capital, right?
I doubt that's what you were asking.
Yeah, the operating would be approximately, on Verizon's side, 1,875, let me look at the subs, would be approximately $110,000 a year on the 4.85.
Okay.
And then on the capital side, the, and again, revenue's changing a little bit, but the capital side, and John has his numbers there, which he may have the newer revenue, but I determine the capital to be 11,813. You have 12,000, right? So, we have the same, came to the same numbers. About $12,000 a year is the half a percent. And then added to that is the 14,500. So, my adding my 11,813, 14,500 is $26,313 a year in capital. Again, that'll change a little bit as revenue's changed. And over five years, that 26,313 is 131,565, five years. The last license had a $200,000 payment, but the last license had unique circumstances where two companies coming in at the same time, Verizon, in effect, you got paid more because you had a new company that was willing to pay you what the old company paid for all the subscribers.
It's also ten years.
Yeah, and that's right. So, as a result of that, the number's a good number. So, together, the operating and then the capital of 26,000 a year approximately in the operating would be about $115,000 a year. And then, of course, there's also Comcast, which, and the subscriber numbers at the end of 2017, pretty equal, which is fairly common in an area like Maynard, which has high technology and folks who are interested in FiOS. At the end of 2017, there was 1,817 Verizon subscribers, and there was 1,746 Comcast subscribers for a total of 3,563 subscribers and cable subscribers in Maynard that stayed fairly consistent. The year before, you were at 3,669, and now you're, then you were 3,562. So, down a little, but not much.
Anybody else have any questions? All right. I read a motion, and the motion is that we move to accept and approve the Verizon New England. Yep?
Can you tell me what percentage of Maynard has FiOS coverage? And are there any plans to provide the service to areas that don't have the service?
The agreement provides for the full extent of the town, subject to certain exceptions. If you're having difficulty getting service, I'm happy to put you in touch with our service rep, and he can identify whether there's a reason you're not able to get the service.
Well, I represent a committee on 155, so it's not a single house.
Well, that's.
We've gone through three iterations with Verizon, including the area of engineering. And at the end of that, we were told they're not doing any more expansion. So, we only have Comcast, we don't have the availability of FiOS, and some wondering, is that the way it is? Is there any other?
Well, the MDUs, the multiple dwelling units, are a unique animal, but you have been in contact with Verizon as far as services concerned?
The last time was some year ago, because after spending a year and a half working with them, they terminated the discussions for no reason other than to say we don't have the budget.
Okay. I'll have someone follow up with you, take your name and contact information.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, on the town side, you might want to have someone, whether it's the administration or the Cable Committee you talked about before, I think the Cable Committee, following that, because there are requirements, and I should say that, again, to the credit of Maynard, there are a lot of communities that have density requirements for build-out. You have to have a certain number of dwelling units on a road. Maynard insisted last time in both licenses, and it's true again this time, that there's no density requirement for houses, so that, as John said, Verizon and the other competitor have to provide, make cable available to all residential dwelling units, subject, as you said, there are certain access issues that are at multifamily dwellings, MDUs, and that's something they can look into. But I do suggest that if the folks who live in the MDU are not satisfied or feel like they disagree, then the town may take a look at that and make sure that their interests are being protected. But John's been fantastic on this issue elsewhere, and you have the right guy to follow up for you.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comments? Move to accept and approve the Verizon New England Inc. Cable Television Renewal License Application and Proposed Renewal License to the Town of Maynard, term of November 25th, 2018 through November 25th, 2023, as shown.
Second.
Anybody else have any further comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because John's here, if we could, if everyone could sign, and I'll sign, and John could take one with him, and you don't have to bother express mailing or anything. He'll be all set.
All right, so before we do that, we will close the public hearing at 7:42.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Nope, this is a new one.
Oh, this is theirs.
So, they provided us this one. So, there's only two?
Yes, I think he just said three.
There's two, Andrew, right?
There's two.
One original to the town and one for Brian.
Keep our options open, too.
Why not? I may feel like I'm just doing something. See, try him again.
I hope he's too bad. Even more concerning.
You're next. Come on. We'll get you situated before we start.
Okay.
All right.
Becky, do you want this one, too?
Okay. Next up is a change in the Board of Directors or the Directors of the Maynard Lodge of Elks. And we have Flo with us to explain what's going on over at the Elks.
Florine Humanek, Maynard Elks. It's just, usually the yearly in April, they change the officers. So, don't believe we've updated in a while, so we just got the update to bring it to current Board of Directors.
Okay, so we're changing the liquor license names, is really what we're doing?
Well, no, the liquor license is my name. I carry the license.
Okay.
But it's the Board of Directors is being changed.
Okay, so, but that's, so that's changing on the liquor license, though?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, there is no change other than the list of directors, the license itself really staying the same?
Correct, staying the same, yep.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Anything from you guys? Yes, Vic?
I'm wondering if we could have the names of the trustees?
That's on the list. It has the director and the trustee.
Don't you have?
Are you looking to have them read publicly right now?
Well, it would be nice. It's a public hearing.
No, it's not.
Okay.
You'd like me to read them, I'll be happy to read them unless you feel as though there's someone that doesn't want to name it out. Stephen Hardy, Kim Landry, Wayne Humanek, Darrell French, Paul McClellan. Those are names. Okay, so there is a motion, and it's that we move to accept and approve the amendments to the license at the Maynard Lodge of Elks for the following change of directors for the liquor license at 34 Parton Road, Maynard, Mass. Give a second.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions for anybody? Flo, anyone else? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Becky, we'll have a?
I'll be mailing it into the ABCC tomorrow for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Paving Management Presentation. Aaron's up. Don't look so serious.
I think this is the second time I've ever seen him with the tie on, actually.
He's superficial.
But I don't remember.
I've seen him with a tie on before, yeah. Yep. All right, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm just gonna wait one second for.
Getting the PowerPoint.
All right, good evening. My name is Aaron McClosco, Director of Public Works for the Town of Maynard. Joining me this evening is Conrad Ledger. He's the Project Manager for Beta Engineering. Beta Engineering is a consultant working for the Town of Maynard. They've been working for the town since 2014. Beta assists us with our roadway capital planning and asset management, as well as some other DPW-related items, such as this summer, they performed a town-wide regulatory signage inventory and prepared some reports and recommendations for us, which will be presented to the board at a later date. But tonight, we're going to be focusing on our pavement management program. Conrad appeared before the board in 2016 and presented kind of an overview of the program, and with some newer board members and new town administrator, we thought it was appropriate to bring him back in. And also, Beta performed a reassessment of the roadways this summer in 2018, so we have some updated information, and we'll be presenting that. And we're kind of restarting our five-year capital planning process for roadways, and we'll be giving an overview and some more information this evening. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Conrad.
All right. Thanks for having me in tonight. Good to see some familiar faces from the last time I was here. So, as Aaron said, we've been working with the town since 2014 on their pavement management program, and today is just going to be an overview and an update of where we're at with the work that we've done with the town. So, just to give you an overview of Beta, Beta's a full-service engineering firm. One of our core disciplines is GIS and asset management. So, we do these types of services for over 120 municipalities throughout New England. Our closest office to here is Norwood, Mass. or Lincoln, Rhode Island. So, just to kind of give you a background of the work that we do with other towns in the area. So, I'm gonna get right into it. So, first off, I want to start out with what is pavement management? So, pavement management is the practice for planning maintenance to maximize the value of your roadway network. So, what it allows the town to do is have some sort of a management system to look at when to perform the right repairs at the right times on your roadways. So, the graphic that's up there right now, on the right-hand side, is a pavement deterioration curve. So, on the left-hand side is the condition of the roadway, and then the bottom graphic is for a time period of years. So, as a pavement starts its life brand-new in excellent condition, it drops down this curve as time goes on, and you have the opportunity to do some sort of maintenance. curve as time goes on, and you have the opportunity to do some sort of maintenance techniques to it. I'll get into the maintenance techniques on the next screen. But the whole idea of doing those maintenance techniques at the right time is to prolong the life of the roadway and to save money over time. So this is kind of a list of some of the maintenance techniques that are available out there today and commonly used in the area. So from the maintenance portion of it, those are roadways that are in pretty good condition, and if you're driving down it on a daily basis, you wouldn't really notice too many defects. But that's crack sealing, fog sealing, and potholes or patching when they arrive. The second category there is when a roadway is, you know, about halfway through that curve, and those are surface treatments. Those are generally from curb to curb. Some of those would be chip seals, micro-surfacing, and full HMA overlays. And then you get down to the bottom of the curve, the structural repairs that tend to cost more money, mill-in overlay, reclamation, reconstruction. So a lot of those are commonly used and what most people are familiar with when they think of paving. So this is the scope of services that we've performed here with the town over the past few years. So first off, we took a look at the roadway inventory and making sure it matches up with Mass DOT's files. We did the field inspection program, the existing conditions summary and report, and then the capital planning and system maintenance is something that happens on a yearly basis. So I'll get into each of these in a little bit more detail. So this is an overview, I just noticed a typo on there, but this is an overview of the roadway network here in Maynard, but for town-accepted roads, 41.87 miles. And you can see on the right-hand side there, the FY19, Chapter 90 allocation is based on 41.07 miles, so almost a direct match. We typically see a little bit of a variance between the two, but this shows that you're getting the appropriate amount of money that the town should be getting from the state in terms of Chapter 90 funding. Just to get into the system interface and what the town uses in between inspection processes, it's a Microsoft Access-based platform, so it's nonproprietary. It doesn't cost the town any money to upkeep this program and to have it on site, and it's open source, so it's basically your data, so you can do whatever you want with it. So this is an overview of the pavement inspection form that is used out in the field, and what the process that we go through is we drive every single roadway. It's a windshield inspection with two trained inspectors in the vehicle, and what they're looking for is basically surface distresses on the roadway, different types of cracking, potholes, patching, utility trenches, and they rate that roadway based on the severity of each of those distresses, and then the extent of that distress covers each roadway segment. What that allows it to do is the program has a calculation in it, and it gives it a 0 to 100 rating, a 0 being a roadway in very, very poor condition, and a 100 being a brand-new roadway. Other information that we collect while we're out there is line striping, curving, and then sidewalk information as well. So what the program allows you to do is to be able to categorize each segment of roadway into a repair category. So those categories from the top of the curve down to the bottom of the curve are no maintenance required, routine maintenance, preventative maintenance, minor rehabilitation, and major rehabilitation. So obviously, from a good roadway to a poor roadway. And what that also allows us to do is get an understanding of the maintenance that's required on that roadway, and then the cost to do that maintenance if you were to go out and do it today. One of the things that I want to note on there as well is that the program really only accounts for curb-to-curb improvements, so this is your, you know, if you're doing sidewalk work, that's in addition to the program's estimating. So this is a, now we're going to get into the existing conditions of what we found during our latest survey, which was, I believe, done in May of this year. So the overall road surface rating of the town is a 69.02, and then that graphic in the middle shows the distribution of how many miles fall within each category. So I did take a look back at our original inspections back in 2014, and the roadway network back then was at a 70.4. So you can see over the past four, five years or so, the roadway network has slightly deteriorated based off the work that has been done and then the deterioration that we've seen here in town. These are just some examples of, to be able to correlate for people, what an example of a particular rating looks like. So you can see on the left-hand side here, it's a little bit tough to see on the screen, but Sunset Road, Section 1, is an RSR of a 36. So this roadway is probably a roadway that's somewhere in between 15 and 25 years old and hasn't had much maintenance done to it at all. So you can see just a slight area of patching that was done. We don't know if that's a utility patch or if that was a maintenance patch, but other than that, there's no signs of crack sealing or any other treatments that have been done to that roadway. Walcott Avenue, the RSR of 75. So one of the things that I know in working with the town is they've been pretty proactive at doing a lot of these maintenance routines, and this roadway actually shows crack sealing. So you can see the squiggly lines there at the bottom of the picture. That's meant to make sure that water doesn't penetrate the roadway over the winter time and then freeze and thaw and cause large potholes. Haynes Street is an 82, so roadway that's in pretty good shape. And then Summer Street, Section 19, was a 91, so that's a roadway that's in a no-maintenance-required So just to kind of look at it holistically and take a look at what the average rating means in terms of costs, we have a backlog summary. So what this allows us to do is kind of set a benchmark for the town at the time of the inspections so that you can see moving forward if you're making progress in a good way or in a bad way for the town's overall roadway rating. So as we said before, that rating is a 69.09, and back in 2014, it was a 70.38, and the 69 comes out to about $8.5 million worth of maintenance that's required on the roadways. Back in 2014, I believe that number was somewhere around $6.2 million. And the reason for such a drastic change, but not necessarily a huge difference in the overall rating, is the distribution of where those roadways fall. So in 2014, I believe there was only about five miles in that reclamation, that most expensive category, and now there's nine. So the difference of falling from that one category to the next is extremely high in terms of the overall costs. So I believe back in 2014, there were 17 miles in the minor rehabilitation category, and those have kind of floated into that lower category. That's what explains the overall backlog number. So moving forward, we're kind of in this capital planning process again. So as I stated at the beginning, the capital planning and the system maintenance are kind of repetitive on a yearly basis. The town has done it on some years on their own, and then when we've done more substantial work and done a full update, we've gone in and helped the town as well. So some of the things that we're looking at now is target RSRs, so target ratings for the town moving forward, and then budget requirements to meet those ratings. Repair, refine the repair costs that are in the program. So we've taken a look at today's costs based on, and the difference between today's costs and the costs from 2014, and we've recalibrated the program to match those costs. Prioritization strategy, the system has built-in prioritization of roadways based on functional classification of the roadway, how many people are traveling on that roadway every day, and also the repair type and how much that repair costs. So we're using those tools to identify the three- and five-year plan moving forward. And then we're taking a look at utility coordination and then ADA issues that are in the town as well. So some of the things that we're looking at are, can the town continue with just Chapter 90 money? Does the town need to allocate additional funding towards roadways or potentially bond roadway funding moving forward? Something that we're very familiar with, with a lot of the different towns that we work with. So this slide here is a forecast model moving forward for different funding scenarios. So you can see the bottom red line there is the existing Chapter 90 allocation. It's 264, 265,000, and you can see different funding scenarios above it and what those funding scenarios would do to the roadways. One thing I always like to mention on this slide is people see that Chapter 90 allotment, and they see, oh, well, I'm only dropping one point per year over a five-year period. But you have to realize that that Chapter 90 money also gets used for other things as well. It gets used for, you know, consulting fees, sidewalk work, curbing work, other maintenance issues as well. So, but we use that as the starting point for our forecast most of the time. Any questions on this slide? This is usually where I get the most questions.
I guess what's your recommendation as the professional who's involved in this in the day-to-day and the long-term planning for the town?
Sure.
Do you see us like in that?
Well, it's really, it's really a town decision for where you want to go with it. So one of the things that I always get asked at Board of Selectment meeting is, well, you work with all these other towns, what's the, what's the average? What do other towns have for a rating? So the, I'd say the average out of all the towns we work with is somewhere in the mid-70s for an overall rating, so you guys are a little bit lower than that. But it's not uncommon, obviously, the mid-70s is the average. So it's not uncommon to have somebody below it, but it may be a sign moving forward that you may have to consider some sort of influx of funding to go into the program, just to kind of bump that roadway rating back up and then, you know, get back into your regular maintenance routines.
So I know the goal is obviously to have perfect roads.
Right.
However, we also have to pay for them.
Yep.
So is there a town that, I just feel like there's always going to be roads that need to be fixed, so you're always going to be playing that catch-up.
Yes.
So where is, where is that balance of what people can afford and what, and preventing the roads from getting worse?
Exactly. So, yeah, so the, really, there's different analysis that we run within the program, and so one of the things that we look at is the types of roadways and what the ratings are on those roadways. Some communities are happy with their main roadways being in good shape and understanding that their community roadways aren't going to be in great shape. But then when they live on one of those roadways, that's when the problem comes into play. So it's really about finding the balance between, like you said, what you can afford and what you want it to be, and then meeting somewhere in the middle there and coming up with that balance. So that's some of the things that we'd be looking at as part of the capital planning process and working with Greg and Aaron on those processes.
And my other question was actually, as far as the, one of the first slides, when you talk about how the roads are rated, do you take into consideration the amount of traffic on those roads?
Not as part of the actual rating itself, because what we're looking for is kind of a non-bias condition assessment at that time. So when we get into that cost-benefit-value equation, that takes into account, okay, this roadway is prioritized over this roadway because it deals with more traffic. So there is mechanisms within the program to be able to help prioritize when you get into trying to develop your capital plan. But the ratings are the ratings.
Okay.
So just to follow up on Justine's question, so based on this, what do you call?
Model.
The model that you're looking at, so you're saying the high-end, 475 is what you're thinking is what we're going to, if you want to spend the money, that's what you're going to get the best roads looking for that price?
Not necessarily, because if, if the town decides that they want to be, you know, say, in the mid-to-high 70s over the next five-year period, then we would have a recommendation and a discussion about possibly bonding money to really infuse the program and get that rating even higher. Because right now, that model is showing that you're going to get, basically go back to where you were four years ago if you put $475,000 into the roadway. But if you want to get into the mid-70s, you're going to have to put substantially more into And then I just have one more slide, so we kind of close it out for you. So the system maintenance moving forward, we work with the town and set the town up to be able to input the information of roadways that they construct on a yearly basis. So we're going to do the system install and the database install at the end. And then moving forward, the town's going to look for monitoring and updating actual costs so that you can have a realistic plan to look at and make sure that the estimating capability of the program is up to date, and then reassess the assets on a periodic basis. So we just completed the reassessment here this year. So we generally say three to five years you want to reassess your roadways, just because the deterioration that's built into the program, it only lasts for so long because there's so many factors on roadways that could happen. So we just finished that, so you won't be, do up for that for another three to five years. And then add in new assets. So Aaron mentioned that we had done a couple other assets as well. So we have done a sidewalk assessment, ADA assessment on the curb ramps, and we have done signs as well. So in terms of the information to make all the decisions in the town, the town's in pretty good condition, so.
Any other question, Vic?
Yeah, I'm wondering, we already had a maintenance program, and I'm wondering how much of that has already been completed? Are we going into a new cycle because we didn't do enough? And also, are we contemplating, for instance, giving the downtown area priority because it looks terrible down there?
So this is the same maintenance program that we've been using for the last eight, excuse me, four years since 2014. We've done a reassessment this summer, and so we've taken another look at those road ratings, and we have updated numbers. Part of that cost-benefit analysis that Conrad referred to looks at those priority areas, downtown being one. Two years ago, we did pave a majority of Main Street from River Street down to Waltham Street on downtown. Nation Street and some of those other areas on Main Street are also at the, towards the top of that list for pavement and some maintenance, but obviously, funding is a limiting factor, and we have to look town-wide.
Anybody else have any other questions? Conrad? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to explain, Mr. Chairman?
I think that's, I think, I think you lead that discussion.
No problem. So our town council, primarily Kate Federoff, has been in talks with the legal representation from Wellspring, who has a lease on 4 Nation Street right now and is proposing a marijuana recreational retail establishment. I may have that terminology incorrect, but that's, that's where they're proposing to go. And so they've been, the two legal representations have been in talks to try to establish a host community agreement. Kate asked for some direction from you, the Board, in regards to two items. One, the length of the contract, and two, the payment schedule. You can see that she provided some guidance as to that. I can provide you my recommendations, but it does, it does align much with what Kate does. I would, I would look at, I do agree that having a contract longer has its merits primarily for the business themselves so that they can have some security in how long they want and, you know, some security that they know they have some longevity and whatnot. But I would, I would recommend perhaps a evaluation to happen every five years if we do go the full 15-years length, just to reassess the contract and the terms of that.
So they were asking you for a 15-year agreement?
They would like it to be as long as possible, so they proposed 15 years.
You could all be dead in 15 years.
So be it, so that, that is obviously their priority.
The, if we're open for conversation on this, I somewhat been consistent with my concern relative to this business or industry, not so much for the industry itself, but just because of the newness of it and the fact that we really don't have a full understanding of what's going to happen as time progresses. My concern with an initial contract of 15 years would be if, because it's such an emerging industry and something changes early on, and we've tied ourselves in for a 15-year contract and it hasn't established itself yet, we've sort of kicked ourselves. So for that reason, I think for an initial contract, we probably should look for a shorter contract, and with the understanding that once we get through that initial bump, we understand how the industry works in our region, in the state as a whole, we then can jump on and extend it out beyond. But that would be my, my suggestion as for how we probably should approach it.
I completely agree with David.
Absolutely.
I think even like two to five years. I know the recommendation said we could go as low as five or another amount, but just because it's so new, I don't even think looking below five years is unreasonable.
Is there a general sense for the Board that we should use five?
Is there a general sense for the board that we should use five years or two, or?
I was just throwing that out, I just.
I, I think a business, a business might have some concern with a two-year contract.
Two or three, I said five.
Yeah, I think five is fine.
I mean, five is, five is fine. If you have a, if there's ever a problem, you can always revoke the license. And then, it doesn't, you know, contract doesn't make much difference.
Very well.
You know, so, I mean, at that point, um, five years would make sense, but.
Although, this is in more relationship, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but relative, not relative to the license to operate per se, but more so with the agreement that we have relative to how much revenue we have coming back.
That's the primary purpose, yes. Which is why the, the second aspect.
We'll always have that, the, uh, potential to revoke a license as we do with a liquor license or whatever.
Correct, if they're in violation of those, as, as, and there's, the Board of Health also has regulations and whatnot. So, there, there are aspects that, that we're providing regulations. So, I can move forward with the five years, I can provide it to Kate and she'll continue negotiations.
Yeah, can you just, just, I, I don't know, maybe everybody, maybe none of us need an explanation. I know you've explained it to me, but have you explained to everybody how the payment works, what the options are? Can you scroll with that so we're all?
Sure.
So, we all understand what the, what the two, set of options are for the payments of the three, of the three percent?
Oh, of the three percent. So, I think I had forwarded you what the guidance I'd received from Kate, so it's the sa- it's the same guidance I had given you, Chris. And in Kate's, by the way, there is the caveat that, that the payments right now per the law is tied to a five-year. So, similar to, we have, you know, a five-year contract length. That's how long the payments are gonna be. So, as Kate put it, um, under the law, the impact payments, that's what we're referring to, the community impact payments, which is three percent of the gross income, gross revenue of the business. The impact payments may not extend beyond five years. The contract itself with all of the other covenants agreements can be longer, but to operate a contract must be in place. The provision relative to the five-year limit on payments is in the same sentence as the provision requiring the contract. So, this has caused us confusion. However, she did point out that we could still do it longer than five years, but the, that the impact, uh, the impact payments are tied to the five-year, um, limit. So, in regards to the scheduling of the payments and whatnot, she, Kate pointed out that she has confidence that the state's auditing, uh, through the Cannabis Control Commission may be sufficient to what our needs are as the town. I would tend to agree, but I do like the, the, the sort of, um, additional monitoring that we could provide, um, for accounting and review that Kate had recommended, uh, for language. And it goes into the, um, the fact that we are able to request access to their financial records, uh, that they would owe us copies of their financial records in addition to providing it to the state. I, I agree to that. I think, I think pushing for, for more sort of, um, having not necessarily control, but a better understanding of, of the finances of the business. And, and not because we're accusing them of cheating, but just so that we can provide that accountability to the public.
So, I had a couple concerns. One, I, I think it's great if we don't have to use our own resources for the accounting, but I think the Cannabis Commission has been extremely disorganized and done a poor job so far in kind of handling this law. So, being on the front wave of the auditing, since we're gonna be one of the first towns, I think it might be a little risky. And two, I'm just wondering what we can do to put in place is a check and balances for the fact that this is primarily a cash business. You know, and knowing that all that money actually makes it to their bank and things like that, because we can be shorted significantly. I'm not saying they would, but.
That was something that I actually, when I spoke to you, Greg, I had the same concern regarding that.
And I don't have a good answer for that right now, but it's something I am also concerned about. I even asked Kate that specifically, do we go through their bank? And, um, and again, she, she provided, the response is she felt that the auditing process by the state was sufficient, but we can get into more detail. I think we should be able to, to have them explain how their, how their bank relationship, or at least how the money is accounted for and whatnot. I, I think that's fair.
Yeah, I'm concerned that not all the money's gonna actually make it to the bank.
I agree.
You know, if they are doing, you know, twenty thousand dollars in sales in a day, it's only fifteen thousand actually being run to the bank.
That's very hard to control, because if you don't, how do you account for that? Just curious, um, and excuse my naive, naive approach here, but why would you think that, um, a marijuana facility would have any greater use of cash than, say, a liquor store?
Well, because marijuana, it's only cash.
That's a dealing with only cash.
Can't take cards.
It's only cash by law.
Only cash.
Not a federal, it's.
That's not true.
It's not true. They can, they will be taking credit cards.
But they can only use what's called cannabis pay, is what I understand, and it's an app. I, I don't think they can take credit cards.
You can't take regular credit cards, not, it's not federally, uh, you talk to any bank and they'll tell you that.
Ah, because of the federal, because of the federal.
Because the credit cards are federally insured, they're credit cards.
Yeah, absolutely, because I'm not familiar with the process of this. This is Andrew Skirman-McLean, he's the past assistant town administrator.
Working closely on this issue, uh, over the summer and into the fall. One of the questions we were asking in these draft HCAs is how are your merchant services, uh, being conducted? Because we've heard you can't have a federal bank and so on. There are multiple banks in Massachusetts that are doing business with these cannabis retailers, and they are providing merchant services, which is a fancy way of saying, uh, electronic transactions along with some other services. But they are taking, intending to take credit cards, uh, as payment. Both of the retailers that have approached the town during the time I was here were adamant about most of their sales intending to be electronic, debit card, credit card transactions and not, and not cash. Part of that is because the high cost of each transaction, uh, they tend to be done on, on credit. But they're working with Century Bank, and I can't remember the name of another bank, but Kate Federoff, uh, verified this, that the banks are available to provide the merchant services. It doesn't mean they can't take cash or won't, that, that concern you have is very valid, but it is not gonna be a, a hundred percent.
It's not explosive for cash.
It's not a cash-based business.
They, the, the, um, I would think that the concern about cash would be no greater than it would be for a liquor store because the liquor store, you know, the state knows what goes into the liquor store, so they have to provide tax revenue for what went in, not basically what came out.
Restaurant meals taxes, you know, you have cash everywhere.
So, they're gonna, I think the control over what they put, you know, take from their grow facility into the stores is gonna be as, every bit as strong as what, um, takes place in liquor stores.
Well, I mean, I wasn't aware of what you just shared with us, so.
I think, uh, Ms. Louie Nero mentioned, it's, there's a lot of stuff changing, uh, you know, it's, it's not unregulated, but it's all new and, uh, but it has been, that was the concern when the ballot was passed two years ago. Uh, there was a ballot measure with no details, and they're still figuring out the details, so it's a very, very important concern.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a, um, I, I got a letter from a resident who's concerned about the location. And I don't know where I should share that. Should I send an email? Should I, should I forward it to the board? Should I say it here? I'm for whatever.
Yeah, I think I might have gotten the same.
I think we all got the same letter.
I got it, yeah.
Oh, did you?
It's about near the, uh. Regarding the, being near the.
Yes, from, from Ms. Lawless?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that everybody saw that and, um, because she did want to come to the meeting tonight, but wasn't, I was unable to attend, so. So, that's fine.
It's a valid concern. But I imagine, I mean, we, town meeting voted on it, and, and the distance, I imagine, has already been measured out.
Distance has been measured out, the, the.
Well, it, it doesn't affect the preschools.
Yeah.
So, preschools aren't affected in, in the zoning.
It doesn't worry.
Not included.
The, the regulation that, that we put in place, we vote to put in place, did not consider preschoolers. Um, we didn't, we didn't think that they would be crossing Main Street.
And my other concern, I share this with, with Greg in regards to the traffic because of where it's located is gonna create, um, a lot of traffic. So, I'm sure that's a concern of the chief too, about how that's gonna.
Yeah, I mean, the, the police chief and, and his group, the, the one day that we all went for a tour of the property, the, the, um, police chief and two officers came, Lieutenant Noble and I think it was, um, Greg?
Yes.
The other Greg, the policeman Greg.
Uh, B- B- Bazzaro?
Yeah, yeah.
Bazzaro?
So, so they, so he was, so the three, the three of them were there and the, you know, the, I think, I, I mean, I've heard people talk about, you know, people, oh, people are just gonna pull up on the street and stop. Well, there's, there's no parking zones. You can't just pull up and, pull up and park wherever you want, no matter what you're going in to buy, so. I mean, you know, they're gonna have to get out of their car, park wherever they park and walk to the location, just like Serendipity and Pizza Express and the rest of the places. I don't, I don't know what.
I do see the point of being close to the preschool, only because I did a little bit of math, and the closest liquor store is about four hundred and fifty, four hundred and eighty feet away. And this is about a hundred, a hundred and twenty-two according to Google Maps. You know, which, so, so it is, it's literally right across the street, um, which is kind of a, not my favorite location for this. And it being the first thing that we're doing, it, it.
However.
I've, I've said before, I don't love inventing a rule.
Yeah, any child, any.
Yes.
I'm, I'm aware of the distance, but I'm also, based on the, the conversations in the meetings and stuff that we've had to date, a, anybody, including a three-year-old from the preschool that escapes, can walk into Main Street Liquors. Literally can walk into Main Street Liquors. You cannot walk into this building without providing ID and everything else. So, you're not gonna have people walking into this building that are, that are underage.
Oh, and I, and I'm actually not concerned about that part. And I'm really not concerned about that part.
But that was one of her main concerns, was it, you know, that so close to this, so close to that. But a, a child can walk into a package store, a child will not be able to walk into this facility. As a matter of fact, you can't, unlike a package store, you can't bring your child shopping with you.
Right, no, I.
So, it's, it's kind of a different set of rules, but.
I think it's more, it's more, you know, and I think that the concern would probably be that I'm, uh, thinking that the concern would be the same if the liquor store was across the street, is it's not the kids running rampant and escaping from the community school. But more that, you know, whoever is going in to buy it, or whoever may be loitering outside, or whatever. So, and I'm sure that's something that can, you know, talk for the public safety or, or something like that.
I, um.
I think that's the main concern, I don't think.
I understand, I understand her concern, and I, and I, whether I agree with it or disagree with it really isn't the point. The time for arguing that point, though, was when this came to town meeting and was up, uh, as, as an article in front of town meeting. And that issue was specifically raised by a resident, and an amendment was actually made to try to limit the distance from any educational facility, and town meeting voted it down. And so, the, you know, the resident who wrote the letter, uh, probably missed her opportunity to have her say on that because, uh, you know, she could always make a motion at a future town meeting, uh, to change the zoning bylaw or have a, you know.
So, how would she go about that? And I think that's her, her main question.
She would notify, she would start to see if the planning board would be interested in supporting a, an amendment to the zoning bylaw, or she could file for a citizen's petition to have the matter heard. And that required for, for, for an annual town meeting, it's very easy, you only need ten signatures.
Can I circle this back to the money again, just before we move on? Because I think that's really important. So, in addition to the auditing, I think we should discuss the payment schedule because I think the auditing through the state would only occur annually, correct? In what's proposed?
Yes, well, right, and so, the, the, that is one, I, I'm glad you did that, uh, because I, I was waiting for the second part. But no, I, um, per the language of the contract, it is, it is annuals. And the scheduled payments, the current, the current draft contract is, um, is paid ninety days after the calendar years.
So, my thought would be, I think would be easier for us from a cash flow perspective and to have better control if the auditing is gonna be a big endeavor to do it on a quarterly basis and check things. I think annually would just be a lot of books to look at, especially if we're thinking this is gonna be busy and the volume of transactions are gonna have. I don't know, that's my thought, other people on the board might feel differently about that.
My feeling is whatever our, uh, business practices in town hall suggest is best for us to make it le- the less amount of, if there's an effort going on in town hall, if we're using res- uh, town hall staff and resources.
We would be.
That whatever they believe, being the finance team believes is the most appropriate. They should make a recommendation to us to say, hey, we think annually would be best because, or we think quarterly would be best because. I don't know enough about the municipal finance process and what they do in that office.
Sure.
To be able to say that that's the best way for them to operate.
I think as far as, as workload and whatnot, I, we, I would have to, I would have to ask those questions, right? With the finance team, particularly the, the town accountant and the assistant town accountant, to see just how we could accomplish that quarterly. So, I'm not to say right now whether it's, it's impossible, um, but yes, it would be something we would have to look into. And, and again, that would have to still be negotiated.
Right.
So, Mass- well, so Wellspring, um, I, I couldn't even begin to speak for them as to how they would feel about providing their books every, every three months.
Yeah, I mean, and I understand where David's coming from with the town's resources. I look at it more from a small business perspective too, whereas there's holes in their books or things we want to investigate. There's a lot of catch-up after twelve months have elapsed to then go back and find, you know, if there's unethical practices or anything like that or missing documents. Whereas quarterly gives us more of a, I did a stay on top of things.
Okay, something I was, I was wondering is if we could pay for a, and, um, a third party, like an outside consultant or the outside auditor, just as we do for our regular auditing processes and whatnot. But, but again, I would prefer to come out of the, the payments, you know, out of the community impact payments. So, that's something I, I would like to pursue.
Could you ask Kate if we could charge them as part of the host committee that we still get our three percent, but they also pay for someone to do this for us?
I could ask that.
At least for the initial five years until the state kind of gets things organized and we're up to speed with this whole process, being one of the initiating, like, communities?
I could ask that. I, I could ask that. I, I'm sure Wellspring would be, um, would have their say and, and they would respond.
It's a negotiation.
Okay, very well, but yes, I could ask that.
Yeah, but we got the upper hand right now.
That's correct, I mean, we control the draft, so.
And they signed the lease, we, and we don't even have to say yes. So, I feel like we have a lot of leverage, and considering we're one of the first, I think we should just try to explore all options.
I agree.
Yeah.
I think it's more that we're not trying to take advantage of it, we're more, we would more just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, but we don't want to have to cost, we don't want to have to cost the town any more money to do the due diligence because.
Exactly.
It's not our business, I guess.
Making sure that we get our fair share.
Right.
Okay. These are great questions, and I, I think it's something I, I will pursue.
Okay. Any other cannabis-related questions?
Relating to the host agreement or in general?
Whatever you want, whatever you want, no, you can ask any questions, but, but I mean, you know, specific to the host agreement, I think, you know, those are all, were all valid questions, and certainly, um, the, you know, the length of contract is not gonna be fifteen years. And, um, I would agree that, you know, they would, why wouldn't they pay for the, um.
For the consultant?
For the, for the, although, to use someone else's term, it was used like there may be a conflict of interest in having somebody's own accountant do their audit for the town.
No, they pay for an independent audit.
Yeah, you're correct, that's how I read it. That's what I was proposing, is to be an outside review.
You're still getting an argument from some that that's, they're paying it, so. But anyways, regardless, they, we can, we can ask them to pay for it either way.
Well, we would get, choose the auditor.
Yeah.
They pay for it.
I would, yes, certainly.
Okay, um, we have another.
That was, those are the two points I had for that particular item, Mr. Chairman.
So, we're gonna check with town hall staff and see how they feel about.
Yes.
That, and then, we're gonna check and let her know that we would prefer a five-year contract over a fifteen-year contract.
No problem.
Okay, we have another public hearing scheduled for eight-thirty, it is eight-twenty-eight, so we'll give it a couple minutes. Anybody need a break? Anything, nothing?
I think it's just, I don't think anybody's here from Comcast.
Mr. Solomon, is anyone here from Comcast?
No, that, he, he's not. He was wanting to make it, but we're gonna go ahead and it's, and we were all set, so. He has to travel from, uh, Brockton and ended up deciding, since the work was done, he wouldn't come if that was okay.
Okay. I guess that's okay. Hey. All right, so, we're gonna get into this, I'll have to read the, um, I have to read the hearing notice. Do that, and then, we'll get started. Okay. Um, we have an open hearing for the renewal of the cable television license of Comcast of Massachusetts Three, Inc., Wednesday, November seventh, two thousand and eighteen, at eight-thirty PM. Maynard Town Hall, Michael J. G. Anotis Meeting Room, Room two-zero-one, one ninety-five Main Street, Maynard, Massachusetts, zero-one-seven-five-four. The Board of Selectment of the Town and Maynard Cable Television License Issuing Authority will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November seventh, two thousand and eighteen, at eight-thirty PM at the Maynard Town Hall in the Michael J. G. Anotis Meeting Room, Maynard, Massachusetts, zero-one-seven-five-four, pursuant to two-zero-seven CMR three-point-zero-five and any applicable cable television renewal license law. cable television renewal license laws, regulations, or requirements regarding renewal of the cable television license of Comcast of Massachusetts Three, Inc. Any applications, reports, statements, proposed or draft cable license and/or amendments in the possession of the town to be considered at the hearings shall be available for public inspection and reproduction at a reasonable fee at the Office of the Board of Selectmen during regular town hall hours. The Board of Selectmen in the Town of Maynard, October eleventh, two thousand eighteen, and the public hearing is now open. Good evening, again.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, again, board members. Good to be here again. William Solomon, the, you know, Town of Maynard Special Cable Counsel on the Comcast, and of course, the earlier Verizon renewal. Um, first, let me say that I, I was remiss in not mentioning one thing before. Uh, in the both licensing processes, that of invaluable help was Mark Menasian, who I mentioned, of course, runs the program. Uh, Mark was intimately involved in all of the ascertainment, figuring out what the capital budget needs were, what the operating budget needs were, uh, where and how to have PEG access video return from remote locations, and how to do it. One of the, uh, issues was how to best connect the town hall to the studio, which we've, uh, worked on, and so he was invaluable. I, I didn't meet her, but he worked with Jen, uh, Godet, uh, of, of the schools on, on figuring out the ascertainment. I was gonna mention before also that Attorney Bill August, a, a colleague in cable licensing, also worked on the Comcast license, not the Verizon, but the Comcast license, and he and I, uh, were part of the team, together with Mark and, uh, and with Andrew, that met with Bob Sullivan of Comcast, and were able to reach what we think is a, is a good deal for both parties, but certainly a good deal for the Town of Maynard, uh, going forward also. Uh, so with that said, the differences here are, this is a ten-year license. Comcast likes being a cable company, and, uh, where Verizon was new to cable, uh, you, you may not know, but Verizon, for at least three or four years, has not built any files anywhere in the country. They got out of the business. They're interested in providing wireless service, video by wireless service, they, um, and so that, uh, when they were done with their build, uh, in Massachusetts, it was one of the first states, uh, they were done with that about four or five years ago, maybe five now, they have not built anywhere in the, in the, in the country, other than, like, Boston, where it's all very much wireless, not just wire. So, as I said before, Maynard, by being proactive, was able to get Verizon in here early. But Comcast, unlike Verizon, which kind of wants a foot out the door, uh, Comcast is, is successful and likes being a cable company, therefore they're happier with a traditional ten-year license. Why have to go through this again in three years, uh, for, after a five-year license, let's do a ten-year. So we have a ten-year license with Verizon. Um, Maynard actually is the, the first town in this go-around, that's, I guess, sort of every ten years, that, that has licenses that expire on the same day, and that gave us some challenges, but also some opportunities, and it also results in, in very similar licenses, uh, with respect to the PEG operating support. The PEG op- PEG operating support, here as in before, is four-point-eight-five percent. I should've mentioned that the maximum allowed under federal law is five percent, but if you get five percent, what happens is these other fees, that the, the town gets fifty cents a year from a cable company per subscriber, and the state gets eighty cents, that's a dollar thirty, so that dollar thirty times your subscriber number, um, which is a total three thousand six sixty-nine, gets subtracted from the five percent. So the difference between five percent and four-point-eight-five is very tiny. It's about, you know, two thousand or so a year. Uh, at the same time, it, it's beneficial to your subscribers, and I believe beneficial to the town, uh, in, in, to have the four-point-eight-five in certain cases. So we, we don't lose much, but we gain some in some other respects, and that's why we ended up at the four-point-eight-five. It also allowed us to get the higher capital number, because the last Maynard license had very high capital numbers, and the, the challenge here was how, when the situation's different, last time Verizon wanted to get in business, they matched what Comcast was doing, we, we, we had the benefit of that. How now, ten years later, do we keep, uh, a, a, a capital number that, that's in line with what the needs are? And, um, and one of the ways we did that is the four-point-eight-five, and the other way we did it is to frankly show what a good program you had here in Maynard. And that was very important with Comcast, 'cause you needed to show them what you had done with the money, and why, uh, it benefited them as a company also, and not only the, the residents of Maynard. So it's a ten-year license, four-point-eight-five percent, uh, the capital is a half a percent, plus ten thousand a year. And the, the difference between the two, which isn't that great, fourteen thousand five hundred to ten thousand, represents the premium that I mentioned before, that even, uh, John Harrington mentioned, that we were able to negotiate with, with Verizon, although we, we kept the, the negotiations separate, uh, the Verizon number was a reasonable number, and there's a slight premium in there, uh, because of the fact that we have a five-year license. We're not getting the benefit of a seven-year license, which we had hoped to have, much less a ten-year license. So, of ten thousand a year, that's a hundred thousand over ten years. Um, also, Maynard, uh, is, I believe, the, uh, second community in the Commonwealth to get a commitment, um, in, that's now being in effect, from Comcast for a high-definition channel. Comcast has for many years said they're not sure how to do this, they have technical challenges, and so they have not, other than in a, a study in Long Metal, Massachusetts, which I always say is the second longest study, after the Framingham Heart Study, uh, that they have not done high definition. Uh, they had done side letters that said they'd come speak to you, we'll come speak to you, and if we can do it, or work it out, but those letters really didn't mean very much in the context of that history. Uh, Revere, for the, uh, for the first time, was able to get a high-definition channel, uh, in, earlier this year. I think some of it was because of legislative pressure, uh, where there's a bill in the legislature that came close to passing. I think Comcast decided, or it was told by the legislature, either you negotiate this and start doing it, or it will pass the law that says you have to, that, um, that, uh, Revere was the first community, there, I have another community that, it's been promised, but we haven't reached the license yet. So to my knowledge, Maynard is the, uh, the, the second community in the Commonwealth where there's a commitment. Our commitment is in a side letter, and that side letter I've, I've handed out, and you have before you. Uh, we negotiated this, we went, Bob Sullivan and I went back and forth on, on what it would say. We wanted more than just we'll come speak to you. Uh, we, we suggested some language which they weren't hap- comfortable with, and we finally reached agreement that they would provide it, the one channel, which is what Verizon does, within sixty months, or such earlier time. And I was, you know, adamant, uh, that it had, say, such earliest time as they decide. We didn't want, if they're providing it elsewhere, but sooner, we didn't want them saying, well, your letter says five years. Now, our letter says five years is the outside date, but if they're providing, but if they wanna do it sooner here, that's great, so it's in their discretion. And what's important is we know we'll have that going forward, and I, I, I understand, and Andrew had discussed, there's some, he maybe can mention afterwards if it's all right, some programs you had here now, uh, where high definition will be very helpful to, to running that program. Now, Andrew, do you wanna comment on that, or?
Sure, the, uh, of course, these public meetings, you may regret having high-definition uh, video out to our homes, uh, but you're probably aware the schools have a chapter seventy-four vocational program, uh, based on, uh, television and radio programming, and, uh, moving through the rest of the twenty-first century, uh, things are gonna be high-def, more high-def than we have now, and this gives them, they actually have the tools there already in the studio, but they can't broadcast it. Uh, so now the standard definition will get upgraded outbound from our studios.
And we'll have high-definition with Verizon in, uh, I think it's twenty, uh, seventeen, it was seventeen months. Um, the other letter we have Comcast, uh, is providing, and I, I'm not, I wasn't clear if it was in place now, I hadn't looked at my file, but a senior discount. Now, you know, it's, it doesn't knock the house down, but it's a senior discount. It's, uh, two dol- it's two dollars off, uh, digital starter, uh, and it's, it's something. Under federal law, you cannot require a senior discount, it's voluntary. Uh, we understood that the, you know, the board would be concerned and care about that issue, that was expressed by the staff, so we were able to express that, and Comcast provides in writing the senior discount. I would say that compared to a lot of senior discounts, what we were able to achieve is if you look at the income eligibility, there's, uh, there's, uh, some categories that you don't always see. Mass fuel assistance and the property tax elderly asset income abatement relief program, a number of seniors can get that under state law here at town hall, and those, that really, uh, expands the group that financially qualifies for this, for the senior discount. Uh, in addition, it, it, it also makes it clear that they're gonna provide it during the term of the license. A lot of licenses have sort of outs, that they could change it at any time. I asked that they not provide that. They, they, they make a commitment to provide it pursuant to their voluntary letter, and they have. So, uh, again, the, the language is different from Verizon, Comcast languages are different, but, uh, in the course of Comcast languages, this, uh, licenses, the language and protections here are excellent for the, uh, the Town of Maynard. Uh, we made sure that, uh, on every, we go over every provision, every section, every word, and I, I should give com- uh, my credit and compliment to Bob Sullivan of Comcast, who couldn't be here today, uh, but Bob is an attorney, he's, uh, he's new to Comcast, he was a town council for five years, he's a city councillor in Brockton, and, you know, he, he can sort of, he, he can understand what these provisions are about. Sometimes with newer Comcast folks who are, don't have that background, you end up describing and fighting over provisions that you've had for ten years, and feels like you're just, you're, you're living in Groundhog Day. With, with Bob, uh, he can understand what, why they made sense, if he had a question, he'd ask, uh, and we, we're here in Maynard, we're able to reach a, uh, a, the license terms, almost automatically, 'cause we had worked on another license earlier, and, and so I'm very pleased with the language. So all in all, as your counsel, I, I think it's a really strong license. I like the ten years, of course, and I think it's a strong financial package, uh, in comparison to others in terms of what your needs are, so I would certainly recommend the board support it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just one comment, if I may. Um, relative to the senior discount, while I very much appreciate it, and, uh, am thankful that it will help those that qualify. Um, it's very, very limiting.
Yes.
And Maynard has very few people that actually, you know, take advantage of this thing. It's grown, but, um, I would hope that Comcast would consider expanding it in the future. Maybe you can pass that, uh, suggestion along-
I will, I will.
-to be more encompassing to more-
Yes.
-people who are on a fixed income.
You know, I, I appreciate that. I sometimes say that I, I get a better discounted Bradley's and Calder, and then I say, well, they're not here anymore, but that's right, that that's, it, it, they, they haven't upgraded it in a long time, and they should take a look at that. If Bob were here, one of the things he would mention, uh, to his credit and Comcast's credit, is they have a program called Internet Essentials, which provides not, uh, a very low-cost internet, uh, and actually even some, I think, computers, to students who have some needs, and you'd be surprised that there, that without, even in communities that have more wherewithal in terms of their general population, there's the need, and now they're providing that to seniors. So, you know, I would, he would, he'd be happy to talk about that, or, at any time, but if anyone thinks they might have a need, uh, for children or seniors to have very low-cost internet, that Comcast does provide that, and they're quite proud of it, and that was part of their obligation under the, uh, purchasing NBC, and, uh, and they, and they have stuck with it and publicized it. Um, but you're right about the senior, just got it up, I'll pass it on to Bob.
Thank you.
As far as the money, it's, it's pretty much the same thing as far as what, what you just talked about earlier, that we're pretty much split between Comcast users and subscribers and Verizon subscribers, so-
Exactly.
If it's a four-point-eight-five, we could probably expect about a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Um, yep, I had, uh, about, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars is right.
Okay.
Exactly. On the operating side, yes.
Right, 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 yeah. Plus the ten thousand.
Yep, the ten thousand, and their, their, their revenue would be about, um, let's see, the other, um, yeah, eleven, I, there, theirs was, let's see, eleven, seventeen, let me take a look. Yeah, about the same, about eleven thousand five hundred plus the, plus the, the, the ten, the ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions? I was in favor of approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I wanted to ask some questions, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't see your hand up, so go ahead.
It is an open hearing, according to-
You, you are, you are given the floor. I said I didn't see a hand, so, continue. Go ahead.
I have a Comcast bill here, a subscriber Comcast, and I noticed, for instance, they, get you for about a ten-dollar sports entertainment package, and then down below, they get you another, uh, six dollars and seventy-five cents for a regional sports fee. I'm talking about all these other charges, for instance, universal connectivity charge, regulatory recovery fees, broadcast TV fees, franchise-related costs. So it would look like we're giving them a franchise, and we're paying for it, okay? That's what, what I take that as. Then, of course, you've got mass licensing fees, and sales tax, and FCC regulatory fees, and state sales tax. How many of these are in truth required by the regulatory agencies, like the FCC or somebody like that?
Sure, I can, good question, thank you, if I can ask.
Go ahead, people, because I-
The, um, yep, and-
I believe a lot of these are something that you folks decide you wanna charge, like, for instance, all of a sudden you give us high-definition TV, but we pay for it whether we wanted to do it, okay?
Sure. I, I, I work for the town, not the company.
That's right.
But that said, I can, I'd be happy to answer that for you, and that, good, great questions, and, uh, so let me take them separately. Let me first, uh, begin with the, uh, the sports fee. There's a sports fee there, and there's a broadcast fee. Now, unfortunately, that telecommunication companies are, uh, in the lead for trying to put costs below the line, so you can sort of advertise a certain rate, but these other costs that add it on. And they came up with this because of the, the high price of sports programming, they added sports programming, and then in the, uh, a few year, maybe ten years back, uh, it might've been the, uh, I forgot the year, the, the Telecommunication Act was amended to allow broadcast over the air channels to require that they be paid by the cable companies. So they can either give their, their programming over the air, the, to the cable company for nothing, or they can be required to be paid, and if a deal isn't made, and call, no longer have a must-carry. And so as a result, the cable companies started charging the broadcast fee, and also the sports fee for the sports programming. Now, both of those, um, were subject, and I believe the case is still active, to class actions against Comcast, but, uh, by subscribers across the country. Much of the case was dismissed, but the last I looked, uh, that some of the case continues, people arguing those are unfair fees to pay. Now, most companies, all, including Verizon and RCN, seem to charge those. So I think that's an excellent point. Uh, the, the federal law does not give the Board of Selectmen authority over rates. It used to, but that was taken away from about twenty-five years ago. So what I would suggest is that, uh, people, you know, write and contact not only the, the company, but more importantly, your senator and congress, senators and, and, and your congressman, or woman, and, uh, and explain that, and see, and ask them, see if they can consider, uh, legislation, or, or discussions with the FCC, which now would be unlikely to be successful, uh, to change that. But that's a good point, and you might contact the company, but they, they see, they really are not fees. They're things that they put on, that they pretend they're fees, but they're not. They're part of the doing business, and that should be expressed in the cost of the product.
They're not something that's actually required by-
Not, not required, right, right.
...the regulatory agency or any-
That's right, that's right, and that's, you know, my, my personal legal opinion, but not, you know, not, I'm not expressing it as the case.
Take a look at it, okay?
Well, and-
It's just one month's bill.
Yes, and then let me just, and the other one very quickly, is that the franchise fee, you know, which relates to the license, or the license fee, which is the, the fifty cents and eighty cents, there's no requirement those be on the bill, they have a choice to do it. But finally, I should say that all companies, if they're successful, get their money from their customers. And so that, you know, none of this is a tax. In other words, the, the, what, as I said before, the company uses the public way, and they're paying for the public way in part by PEG access, and it's not, it's, and the law deems it not to be a tax or a fee, and not to be a tax, but a fee. They're, they're, just like their landlords charge them rent to use the buildings, they're paying rent to the town for using the road. And as I said, that over the course of time, uh, the, the companies are not gonna charge you less, you can see from these other fees, if you give them the right-of-way-for-nothing. So the answer is they don't have to put all the fees on, like, such as the franchise fee. They have a right to, it's certainly fair to do that, but it's not required. Uh, but finally, I should say that going forward, um, it is helpful, particularly in- But finally, I should say that going forward, it is helpful, particularly in the bundling, and let me just, I know it's a long night, but last point again. The bundling, the bundling issue is just, you know, in a world where they're charging one rate for three services, it's crucial that a town have, make sure that the license doesn't let them bundle and figure out how much is cable upon which they pay you, based on their own books. And that's what we made sure that Verizon didn't do. Same with Comcast license. There's no language saying that they can, bundling is determined by how they keep their books. But as you go along, and you get a quarterly payment from each company, and you get backup revenue, very important for the town, and I'm happy to look at it for you, he's using apparatus, to look, to keep a record of those payments, to see what they are each quarter in each category, and to make, to decide at one point if there's a question to ask the company, and at one point, there could be an audit. So, particularly in the world of bundling, and where there's more competition, where they could start to say, well, instead of $80 for, $70 for cable and 40 for internet, they could start to say, well, it's 40 for cable and 80 for internet, where they have less, they have less competition. And now, your, your, your revenue is down. So, the town going forward should continue and build on what it's done, and keep track of that revenue so that it can monitor that and decide when the time is to ask the right question, or to audit, because both licenses have audit provisions. In fact, I believe in the Comcast audit provision, we have, they need to pay us some money if they owe us money. So, that's something the town can protect itself going forward. Thank you for the question.
I'm wondering why the town is complaining about these fees.
We don't have, they don't have any ability to do anything about it. And so, it's, 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 the town might be able to say something at one point, but-
I don't see why not. It would be more, it would be more for my Board of Selectmen than it would for me as an individual.
Sure, yeah.
Because I've been playing electric utility for 100 years.
That'd be a good role for a cable committee.
They have a fee on there, okay? Where they're supposed to be taking down double poles. Take a look around town.
Right, yeah. No, no, that's a problem everywhere. And that'd be a good role for the cable committee, so, so thank you.
But anyway, I just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
Great question.
Because it seems to me as though we're giving them a franchise for five years or whatever.
Five years.
And then they're charging us $1.73 a month. So, they're not paying it off their bottom line. They're taking it from the subscribers with all the rest of that stuff. And they seem to invent, as you go along, they seem to invent fees. I mean, you know, it's a little ridiculous. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I appreciate your-
You're welcome, sir.
Explanation.
I didn't see a hand. I apologize.
Thank you. I promise you the very last comment. Because they, you believe they invent fees, which is a fair comment, that if you didn't get compensation for your right-of-way, then the consequence would be that you believe that they would invent fees to charge anyway. So, in a world where you have a valuable asset, very important to be paid for it, because if you weren't paid for it, it's not as if that wouldn't be otherwise charged. So, I think that, that point supports what the board's doing, is making sure they have a fair, not an overly rich, but a fair license, so the town gets compensated for it. It's all the work it does, and it's right-of-way.
I'm pretty sure my bank is doing it, my insurance company's doing it, my cellphone company's doing it, my electric utility's doing it, my gas utility's doing it. I'm pretty sure they're all doing it, Vic.
You're right, Mr. Chairman.
Can't argue with you.
The name of the game is bucks.
Well, my, I said insurance, just to get him going, so we'll see if it works.
I'm gonna pay those guys that kind of money.
But anyways, now we're gonna start over. So, anyways, the, the item on the floor is that we move to accept and approve the Comcast contract, Cable Television Renewal License, application and proposed renewal license to the town of Maynard with a term of November 25, 2018 through November 25, 2028, as shown.
24th.
Huh?
November 24th.
Okay, mine says 25th, but if you say November 24th, it's through November 24, 2028.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just ask in your, in your vote, that you make reference to the two side letters, so the record shows that, though they're not, they're not a contingent on the vote, that, that this vote took place when these side letters had been presented.
Okay, give me, we start all over, okay. Okay, thank you.
Better times the charge.
I'm beginning not to like you, William. All right, so, we're gonna start all over. I make a motion, I make a new motion, that we move to accept and approve the Comcast contract, Cable Television Renewal License, application and proposed renewal license to the town of Maynard with a term of November 5th, November 25, 2018 through November 24, 2028, as shown, as well as the inclusion of the two side letters provided by Robert F. Sullivan, the Government and Regulatory Affairs at Comcast Xfinity. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments to make before we vote?
Yep.
No? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the four originals here, and if you could sign them, and then I'll leave them with your staff, and Comcast has said you could FedEx them out tomorrow, and I can talk to you about that.
Okay, I'd like to take this opportunity to close the public hearing at 8:56 PM.
I'll put the date short.
Today's day.
So, we don't need to-
You go, Peggy. Lot of paper.
Are there copies of these in the contract?
No, no. Well, they won't be in it, but, you know, when you file them, you should, you should clip it to the licenses so people have it going forward.
Do you have them back there?
And just so you know, my name's spelled wrong, but I don't know if that's a problem.
Oh, I apologize. That must be my fault. Mr. John, why don't you fix it? You do it by hand, it's fine.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
You know, if you keep them, I'll call you tomorrow, and we'll talk about sending them out.
I've never had this happen opposite.
There was something that came up today. We've got them all signed, so I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. I'll call you tomorrow, okay?
Are you done, Andrew?
Excuse me?
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Well, since you, you beat feet out of town in such a rush, you beat your feet out of town in such a rush, that as a board, we haven't met since you've made the decision to leave, I just thought it would be appropriate that, as a board, we recognize your contributions to our town, and thank you for them.
Thank you.
And wish you well in your new endeavors. And again, you know, thank you for everything you've done for us, and we've got a fingernail patch when our pal jumped ship, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a great five years working here, and lots of friends and lots of good memories, and I'll be sure to be back. In fact, I'm due back here on Saturday for, I have to teach some people how to crawl.
Crawl a little bit, too. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Joel Houdman, place MOA.
Good evening. So, since we last met, as promised, I forward to you a draft MOA, for those, again, for the record, memorandum of agreement, sometimes referred to as memorandum of understandings. And please remember why, I'm sure, there's no doubt that this would have been sent to council, should be sent to council, and that lawyers being what they are, I have no doubt will have comments. I'm back tonight, really, to discuss, while this outlines a lot of legal stuff about issues associated with it, it obviously also contained our proposal for mitigation to the town for the impacts to the project. And as you remember, we had, in Christmas past, originally had discussed, you know, a different package, when in fact, we were seeking the town of Maynard to provide sewer for both the Acton and the Maynard part. Since then, we have resolved that issue, as reported to you in the last meeting. And so, this represents what we believe is a fair and reasonable package. And it's really comprised of three components. One of them is, is that the $450,000 would be attributable to the repairs as outlined and done through the various studies and peer reviews of Powder Mill and its sewer down from the project to the lift station. A, what we believe, while we are in fact producing much less flows than was originally proposed, we do recognize that the system, once analyzed, requires some repairs, repairs that inevitably, even if we were not part of this, here presenting this to you, would be a burden to the town. And so, we are pleased to have an opportunity to come to provide an improvement that we think not only benefits, obviously, our project, but benefits everybody who connects to that system. The second one is, and this came as a result of discussions and even public comment, was regarding to ensure that there was a proper sidewalk crossing network, whatever the particular case of further studies and discussions might be at the ZBA, but to allocate $50,000 towards those improvements, to produce pedestrian access up and down Powder Mill. And the last one really goes to an issue of also concerns we heard, which is that to, in this world today, to be, obviously, to be part of smart growth is to try to find ways for alternative transportation. And so, that we also would want to contribute $25,000 to the cross-connect system, to be able to bring out service to the project, so that, again, we can help people to reduce down movement of cars in and out of the project, and to get them to the train station to commute to work. And so, those are really the, the business terms to that. The rest of everything in this agreement deals with timing, deals with descriptors. And again, I have no doubt, and we can sit here and certainly go through it, but I see council isn't here tonight, certainly could spend time going through the document. What I'm seeking for is to turn to the board, we've spent a great deal of time together, we've had public hearings, we've had hearings with, where we, the town had an opportunity to, to comment and, about the project extensively. And that, you know, we're at a point where we've offered what we think is a reasonable mitigation package that's fair to the community. And now, we seek for, hopefully, this board tonight to look upon the application and to, to endorse the LIP application. And, and again, every town does things differently, so I can only report what other communities that I've experienced have done. And that is often that when LIP applications are approved, there's a, there's a condition subject to. And the subject here would be that, you know, between now and, we'll say, the end of February, that a memorandum agreement in final form be executed, that it contains the business terms that were, that I just outlined, and that we don't necessarily need to have the legal scholars work through the documentation as much as really understand and agree to what is presented. And, you know, and my hope tonight is that we can, you know, is, I think I've proven to the, to this board in my work, that really, our commitment has been from the get-go, the work and a collaborative effort with the community. I don't think we've done anything to take away from the belief that that's what we're here to do and do right, which is kind enough by even one of your public to even comment that it wasn't, I was a nice guy, didn't like the project, but they thought that the developer was okay. At least, that's a benchmark I went home and proudly told my wife. So, again, I'm here to answer your questions, and then hoping that this board might consider this application that has been in front of you.
Joel, I have to say, I strongly disagree with you. I, I think having legal counsel weigh in is essential, and I think there's a lot more to this agreement than just the numbers. I mean, I think the details of this agreement are really what's important. And I will tell you personally, after reading through this in great detail, paragraph 3B3, which deals with prerequisites before the money is paid by the owner, is a deal-breaker for me as it stands. If there's prerequisites that, that the owner can decide not to pay us at the zoning board of appeals, or if he himself appeals something, that's completely out of our control as a Board of Selectmen. So, if negotiating all this money, we're spending all this time doing this, and then that paragraph is in there to take effect with something the owner takes initiative on, and we lose out on all that money, we've spent so much time negotiating, I'm not okay with that. So, I wouldn't even want to talk about numbers until we address that paragraph specifically and some of the other details in the other paragraphs. And that's just how I feel. I don't know how, we haven't talked about this as a board at all.
And that's fine. And so, you know, again, you know, understand that we spent a great deal of time together, it's been a period of time, and I understand they have to be productive periods of time. We have to have these discussions. I'm okay with that, too, as long as we can come up with a path in order to do that. I would have hoped council could have been tonight, I hoped a red line or somebody could have provided some feedback, too, to that effect. And so, we have an opportunity to discuss your issues or concerns. I mean, you know, when asked for somebody to produce a document, I read documents all day long, is that, you know, a document starts, and then there's a discussion about it, and hopefully, you reach a point where the parties agree to the terms of that. So, I'm not opposed to that, Melissa, nor am I trying to do a cram-down in my comments. I'm just trying to figure out how to, you know, to facilitate through a process in a point in time where, you know, we either can reach agreement or not reach agreement.
With all due respect, Mr. Khan, you sat here a few minutes ago and said you wish for us to vote tonight to approve.
Well, I-
And yet, you just said seconds ago that you're not here to jam anything down. Asking us to vote, as Melissa has stated, now, I came prepared tonight to talk about the details that I had gone through for hours, looking, as apparently Melissa did, too. And for you to say, to leave that up to the lawyers, yes, I think our lawyers need to look at it and should opine on it, but so should we. We are the elected officials. The other point I wanted to make, Mr. Khan, is you started your comment by saying, we've had public hearings. Can you give me the date of a public hearing that was held on this matter?
Excuse me, in terms of the presentationist package, I sat on a high school stage.
A public hearing is an official, official term.
I sat on a public stage.
There have been zero public hearings on this matter.
So, we had a public meeting. We have not had a-
Been zero public hearings.
We have not had a public hearing.
Correct. Joel said there had been.
I, excuse me.
Just correcting the record, correcting the record.
All right, okay. Excuse me, I, I may be misunderstood, the meeting at the high school where the Board of Selectmen sat on this stage.
There was a Board of Selectmen meeting, public meeting, not a public hearing.
So, the, so the meeting was a, in response to a request in this room, I do not think Joel was present for that meeting, but where there was a group, several, several people got up and requested a, a audience with us and the developer for a question-and-answer session, very much like a public hearing, but not a hearing, because one was not required by law, so we called it a public meeting. We held a public meeting in the, in the Maynard High School auditorium, at which time, you know, many people got up and stated their opinions on a variety of different topics, and they were all heard. And you answered a lot of the questions, to some people's satisfaction, to other people's, to not their satisfaction. And then, you know, that was, that was the only public meeting and/or hearing that we've had, other than those that have taken place in this room, and one probably pretty close to 20 months ago that took place in the-
At the library.
Maynard Library.
And even that was a presentation, that was not a public hearing.
That's right. I didn't say it was a hearing. Simmer down, sunshine.
No. My name is not Sunshine, and I would appreciate being dealt with with respect.
But anyways, it's, it's, you don't, don't attack me.
I'm not attacking him.
I said it was a, I said it was a public meeting in a library, and you jumped on my throat and said it wasn't a hea, it wasn't a hearing. I didn't say it was a hearing.
You called me Sunshine.
I'm defending your position.
All I ask is for respect, Chris.
You get plenty of respect.
And I meant nothing biased and negative. And when I said I wish something, doesn't necessarily mean, Mr. Gavin, and please call me Joel, we've known each other a while already. And I'm, you know, I understand, but I'm here to, just to try to further the conversations, that's all.
So, to David's point, Joel, you talked about, you know, different communities do this different ways, and you've done it different ways in different communities. At every opportunity that we've had to discuss this as individuals, and/or as a group, or through Greg, and Kevin, and Andrew before him, the discussions have always led him to instruct us as a board to have an MOA in place and signed before we make a determination as to whether or not we were going to support the LIP. If there's anybody that believes that Adam Costa has told us something different, feel free to say so, but that's my understanding of his comments, where have been, that we, the five of us as a board, should get this document completed and in place and signed by everybody before we have a vote and take a vote to approve the LIP.
Okay.
So, I, you know, I kind of just, you know, we should talk about that. And to David's point, one of the things that we talked about last time we met, was that we would, we would, you know, we would like a new MOA based on the fact that the developer and the project was going to seek sewer from Acton as opposed to Maynard, and that these things would be reworked. And then, that we would come back and negotiate these things like David's- And then, that we would come back and negotiate these things like David's talking about. I don't know what, I have no idea what David has for points or for information, but that each of us would read through whatever document we were forwarded and sent, and we would then start the negotiation process based on those questions that David has, that Armin has, that Justine and myself and Melissa have. All those questions are part of a negotiation, because we've had no negotiation.
Right.
We sat and talked, you know, until some of us haven't wanted to talk anymore. And now, we're at this point where now we're going to have to, you know, actually, this will be the first evening we've had any type of negotiation at all.
Okay.
So, I don't think that we're, I would, I'm speaking for myself, but if anyone else feels differently, you always can speak up. I feel as though we're not quite ready to, you know, approve the LIP, because we've been advised by our town council to go through any other questions we have in the MOA and get those resolved prior to supporting the LIP application. Does anybody disagree with that that's kind of what we've been told?
I apologize if I then misled it in any way. So, please then start. How would you like to proceed, sir?
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Can I make a suggestion?
Can you give us your name?
Lulabean, from the attorney for the applicant. Just trying to stay in the back. I'm not telling you how to negotiate, but I think the most sensible way, both to protect the town, and again, I don't represent the town, is for you to funnel all your comments to Mr. Costa, both business comments and what I call legal comments, all right? And then, you come back with, through Adam, a alternative document that we can, meaning cumulatively, can work off of. I think that will make the process, you know, a lot easier for both sides, a lot more efficient. You know, if there's a business point, you know, a number in here that, you know, you particularly find to be inappropriate, I think that's something you can mention tonight. But, you know, the devil is always in the details, and to go through this, I think you're better suited where in the confidence of town council, you can express your issues. Adam is a very capable lawyer. He's done many of these agreements. He can delete, add, correct, and then he can present through you, once you're satisfied with the draft. I'm not trying to negotiate this directly with Adam. I'm trying to do this where the board is satisfied, okay, that their comments have been cumulatively funneled to town council. He's, you know, recreated a draft or revised this draft that reflects generally where you are. And then, we take a look at it. If the issues become insurmountable, and I don't mean, we look at it and just throw it in the air, but if they become insurmountable, so be it. We try our best, and that's it.
Well, then, we always have the option of coming back here and having a discussion.
Right. But I mean, but I just think this piecemeal discussion, unless you have some number, there's a number in here that's X, and you want it to be 9X.
We're not talking about a number.
No, you're talking about the agreement in its entirety.
Yeah, yeah, we're talking about the agreement in its entirety. And I think, well, part of the issue that you're missing, and part of the conversation that we had at our last meeting and the meeting prior to that, was that due to some of the changes, concerns that some of the people in town have had, and some of the people on this board have had about, you know, how the working group worked and how that was structured and how that all played out, that a lot of people would much rather see this process occur in this room than with, you know, Joel and Adam and the rest. That was just a, you know, that was just the general consensus. I believe it was a unanimous consensus of this board, that we would like to have this particular set of discussions in this room with Joel. You know, unfortunately, Adam was unable to make it this evening, but in move that way. Now, certainly, I don't anticipate, and I don't think anyone here anticipates, that some of the things that, you know, Adam Costa's going to redline, that we would sit here and discuss because they're legalese. But certainly, when we start to talk about, you know, some of the more specific items that are, you know, a layperson has a vision into and an idea of what they mean and those types of things, and, oh, by the way, how some of the people on this board have dealt with other projects in the past, so we're familiar with some of the language and some of the needs and wants of the town. I think those discussions are, this is the perfect place for them personally. I don't-
Mr. Chairman, why don't we proceed then and see how far we can get?
That's fine. I mean, we've set a time limit. I don't, you know, I don't want to be here till 2:00 in the morning banging these open doors.
No.
Certainly, you know, David has spent, you know, we've all spent time, you know, looking at certain things in here. Melissa had her comments, David's made comments, I have some comments. But let's, you know, let's take a few and see where they, where we go to start, and then we'll, you know, certainly, Adam, you know, Adam Costa's going to have a very large role in the final document, but some of the issues that each of us have, you know, we'd like to have them brought up in this forum, so, because we've told the people in Maynard that that's what we were going to do.
Fine.
If you don't mind, if I could go just quickly on clarification purposes, the two buildings that are going to, that are being proposed, they're going to be half in Acton and half in Maynard, correct? There's two buildings that are-
There's two buildings to where the town line runs.
Correct. The town line was right to the middle.
And it also nips the corner of the clubhouse.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
So, from, just from my clarification, how is that providing the water and the sewer going to work on those buildings for, half is going to be Maynard, half is going to be Acton? How is that going to work?
Well, we haven't yet put, because obviously, this also involves the town of Acton. And so, there, you asked a very good question. We know that the Department of Housing and Community Development defines where a school child goes based on where the majority of the square footage in the master bedroom lies. So, I have a theory, and I think I've expressed it before, but if I haven't, I apologize, is that maybe that same definition goes to the fact that the water supply for a unit is provided by one town or the other, that we use the same criteria in sort of splitting up where that dividing line runs between the communities. Now, you know, Acton needs to be confronted and discussed with this as well. It needs to be done in conjunction with, you know, maybe the town managers to help facilitate, but that's one idea of how that could be done.
Do you have experience with doing that in any town?
This is only, as far as I know, ever been done in other one community in the Commonwealth, where a town line runs in such a precarious way through a project. It's not that it can't be done, but I'm, no, I have not personally had that.
Where you had two towns that have, that two towns have split, one building's utilities?
Yeah, because I thought in that project, it's split through the project, but not through the buildings, which means the water metering is a separate issue, was much easier to control.
Well, it is when the buildings are separated. That's correct. And I have done projects where there's buildings in each town, and this particular one, due to limitations of the site, that the town line runs between. So, it does run through units.
But what you said is it's never been done before. You've never had a building-
I've never had a building where the town line has run at a diagonal through a building. That's correct.
I'm only aware of situations, and both legal precedent, where town A was providing water for town B, where the building bifurcated it. It's obviously going to be a cooperative thing. I think at the, you know, the bottom line is, there's so many units that in Maynard, it are in Maynard, and that's all Maynard should be providing services for.
So, is there-
So, if we stay in that context, I think we're fine.
Have they ever, have, and I'm, obviously, I'm new to the board, so I wasn't privy to any of the other, I wasn't paying attention as closely before. But was there ever a possibility where you looked at how, that kind of looked a little insurmountable, because it looks a little bit, it's never been done before, it looks complicated, no one really knows how you're going to do it, why don't you change the layout of the project?
Because the site didn't configure and didn't allow us to do the buildings the way we did. It's an unusual site in that the town line runs at a diagonal. So, often, it runs where, differently where it runs through, but in this particular case, this is, this is what we've proposed to both communities.
So, you could, but you could put one along the diagonal if you wanted, one building along the diagonal.
Do you believe the project is not fiscally viable if you don't have the buildings split town lines? That you can't, that your, your, your project cannot be successful without dividing town lines?
I believe that the project requires what, to consider what we've proposed.
But it does not, you can still be successful with this project, yes or no, relative to if you were not to bifurcate the town line?
I don't believe we could.
I mean, if you're looking at the land, and we're just looking at the picture, there's got to be a way, you guys are the developers, there's got to be a way of moving the buildings or building the, in such a way so that we don't have this concern or this issue.
We went through a number of concepts. We were not able to discover one that was functional, that provided us the account.
You've only seen one. Did we see those other ones?
No, we wouldn't go through draft paper stuff.
Show them with us.
I don't even have them anymore, David.
Oh, that's too bad. Did any of them not cross town lines?
No, they all crossed town lines.
Have you ever heard of a, of a project where the question was asked, where a, you know, I guess the question would be, what's the obligation for Maynard to say that we have zero setback allowance for our town line? Why is there an obligation for Maynard to allow that?
Under chapter 40B-
Excuse me?
No, again-
Under chapter 40B, through the request to the ZBA, there will be a waiver requested for that. That's where the-
And is zero, is a zero setback reasonable?
Mr. Gavin, we're not, we're, we've been involved with the town for over a year.
This is the first time you've been here talking with me on this project?
Well, because I like to leave lawyers in the background and, you know, I was-
Well, it's the first time we've had, as Chris mentioned earlier, it's the first time we've had any detailed discussion.
This is the first time we're having an opportunity for us to talk, yeah.
No, I understand. Okay, so, you know, in terms of the town line running through the project from a zoning standpoint, again, I'm not giving advice as town council, but from terms of a 40B concept, that's not impermissible. Number two, in many situations-
Do you know of any projects where it happened to make it permissible, to say it is permissible?
Well, the Acton, the Admalon Wester project.
But to Melissa's point earlier, that does not cross through a building.
No, no.
That crosses through the property, correct?
Look, I can only tell you what I think. You don't have to take my advice or what I'm suggesting.
No, but I think you're missing the point.
No, I'm not missing the point.
You're talking about something that's not related to what we're talking about, which is, you've got a building that crosses the town line. Is there any other pre-existing-
I can, I can come in here with a litany of buildings that are called conventional buildings throughout the Commonwealth that are partially in town A and town B.
40B projects?
No, conventional projects.
And do they split the, do they split the utilities?
But that would be an agreement through the town?
No, it wouldn't be anything. It's that the bylaw permitted it. Bylaws permit, you have lots probably in Maynard that are in Maynard and Acton, Maynard and Stowe, Maynard and the other adjoining town, and people build on them. And there's a, you know, when you look to the bylaw, it talks about, it's a typical concept, lots in two towns. How do we do that?
These lots are not in two towns. These are lots are a budding two towns, correct?
No, they're in two towns. You know, lot A is partially in, say, Sudbury and partially in Maynard, okay? And the guy builds on it, okay? His house line may go through it, but his area is considered for both towns, et cetera.
Project here, are the plotlines, is one of the pieces of property that you own, that your developer owns-
Yep.
-in both towns?
You're asking me, are there situations like-
No, I'm asking you about this project. You, I think you bought four or five pieces of land to build this 12 and 1/2 acre development. Out of those 12 pieces of land, or five pieces of land that you purchased, how many of them are included in Acton as well as in Maynard? How many of those pieces?
One, I don't know the deal.
One building.
No, not buildings.
No, the land.
But you're asking about that piece of property.
No, no, he's asking about like the originally acquired parcel.
The brick warehouse that's in there, on that property is in both towns. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying the property itself, the piece of property itself.
I believe the largest parcel is bifurcated between Maynard, the old commercial area with the brick building.
So, one piece of the property, but not-
The largest part of the property, okay? The other parcels were bought to improve, you know, the viability of the project in terms of, you know, requirements for traffic, for drainage and things like that. But the large parcel where the brick buildings are is bifurcated, not bifurcated in terms of half, but is-
I understand.
Is in both Maynard and Acton, okay?
And I guess my point as far as the, as far as the utility split, and I know that there are plenty of buildings that are built on lines.
Yes.
But which ones actually split utilities? Because that's, that's the next question, is how, I mean, I think Joel kind of said it, and I realize it's new and we haven't really explored it yet, we don't know how that will happen, because it's never been done before.
Well, there is a, there's a mechanical challenge, okay, in terms of what do we do? We started very generally, you know, who supplies the water for this unit, et cetera, and what happens when you stub it and things like that, all right? We've been doing this as a friendly 40B, and that, you know, is a dialogue that you have with the town, trying to enter into a dialogue to talk about issues and to work in a positive way, okay? The alternative would be not to have this dialogue, nobody's a bad guy, just go to, most projects that proceeding under 40B are not friendly 40Bs or not LIP projects. I hate to use the word friendly, because I think that's a misnomer for the other projects, because necessarily, the other projects, if you do them the standard way, are not unfriendly 40Bs, okay? So, we either try and put together a mitigation package with you guys, or, and these issues need to be worked out at the Board of Appeals level. You know, how is the water going to get taken care of between the towns? What's reasonable?
But how can, how can we agree to an MOA or an MOU, or however you want to call it, when we don't know, I guess-
We are capping the amount of water sewer requests for the town to 180 dwelling bedrooms, 180, 180 bedrooms, so even-
But we don't know how to physically do it in the building.
Well, physically in the building is that we would have two services coming into the building, we would have two sewer pipes come into the building, and they would actually be separated.
Hey, Joel, we have, we have our DPW director right sitting behind you, and I bet you he could, he could tell you exactly, that's not the way it's going to work. It's difficult for you to, to put that in place. He could probably clarify that for you. It's easier said than done, let's put it that way.
Well, I didn't say it was an easy thing to do, because you have to build two old systems in a building where the draining stacks come and separate themselves out, but the idea would be whether or not we took a unit that had, we'll say, a sink and one bedroom and a bathroom another, but as long as we don't exceed 180 dwelling, dwelling bedrooms, that we would be able to figure out how we would do that. And one of the discussions that has not taken place, as an example, but I'm aware of it, would be the sprinkler system. Yes, it would be surcharged from two different towns, but of course, there would probably be some sort of crossover valve in the event the pressure dropped in one. The other town wouldn't want there to be not sprinkler in the building if a fire went off. So, of course, there would have to be some municipal understanding of a, a problem like that, of how that would operate. So, there are mechanical parts, but I don't think any of them is insurmountable. As a matter of fact, if anything, they add just cost to the developer, of which he's willing to pay, in order to resolve those issues through mechanical drawings and working with the municipalities, and in part, starting off with a discussion, which is town managers talking to each other and saying, okay, well, how do you think is on the other side? Because Acton may also have a different view of it, too. So, I believe that that's a collaborative discussion, but I don't think it's an insurmountable one. I think it's one that just takes further discussion to figure it out and how it would work.
The 40B process doesn't and can't in any way waive the state building code, state plumbing code, okay? Can't. In other words, we can go to the Board of Appeals, and they can't give us relief from any state requirement. So, to the extent that sewer and water are under the, you know, state plumbing and health codes and things like that, we have to comply with it. It's not even a Board of Appeals issue. A year or so ago, when we went to the water district, when we were proceeding under the hope that we would be getting sewer from Maynard, you know, the Acton Water District, which, as you know, is a separate governmental entity, it's not part of the town of Acton, it's elected separately and stuff like that, they had never done this in the past. But I went in and I presented, you know, legal arguments, case law, that says that a water department or a water district can supply water to another community without an interdepartment, inter-community agreement, so long as their connection remains in, say, Acton, okay? So, their agreement was, was that they would provide, the connections would end in Acton, but the water service or the actual water could connect, could continue into Maynard. So, we would, that would be the way we'd be proceeding here, probably, that there would be connections in Acton that may service a, a unit that's partially in Maynard, and there may be a connection in Maynard that may be servicing a unit that's partially in Acton. But as Joel said, the bottom line would be, we have to comply with the state plumbing But as Joel said, the bottom line would be, we have to comply with the state plumbing and building code. Nobody can waive that. We understand that. And number two is you won't be asked to provide services for more than seventy-four.
Seventy-four units, a hundred and eighty bedrooms.
A hundred and eighty bedrooms. In the same way, alternatively, Acton will be asked to whatever the remainder is to provide water and sewer for more than that number of bedrooms, and that's the way it's counted. So, we understand it's a challenge. We understand it's more expensive. We understand more mechanical engineering to be done than just simply a pipe running from A to B. We have that. We, you know, but Joel and I have dealt with many unique situations, and this is just one of them. The project I did the permitting for, you know, about a dozen years ago in Acton, was partially in Acton and partially in Westford. We worked it out. I mean, it's just something you work out after time, and it's not as simple as a project that just sits in one town. But these are things that, even the town of Maynard can't waive. They can't waive, and we can't ask the town of Maynard to waive the plumbing, you know, code. We can't ask them. I mean, it's a state code. You have no authority over it. So, we know what we have to do. We have to design it, and we have to show it to your plumbing inspector and your DPW, and they have to be satisfied that it's going to work and that it complies with the applicable code. You know, but that's way down the line, assuming we get a comprehensive permit.
And that includes inspection services. That includes all sorts of, we, we understand that there are two parties to the table. And, you know, obviously, you know, we would just assume they never duplicate efforts, but in essence, they're going to all want to do their thing, and so, we recognize that, and we believe that those are issues that can be resolved, you know, through the process. Those aren't, I think, the, to me, at least to me anyway, the challenges that, you know, we face here at this moment. They're just the challenges that the project has to overcome to the satisfaction.
Which is our obligation, not your.
Are you willing to share with us the memorandum of agreement that you wrote for Acton?
We don't have one.
You don't have any memorandum of agreement with Acton?
It was approved.
Was approved.
Oh. They approved it without an MOA?
Correct.
Wow.
Now, it's clear that in the record, their requirement is that we have to engineer the sewer solution we came with, and we have to, of course, do that. So, it didn't come without a requirement.
But you're not going to do any other kind of mitigations for them or anything like that?
At this point, the, we can get you the letter that they wrote, DHCD, and you can read it. That's the only piece of paper that exists, in that they expect us to do A, B, and D. And I don't remember, but I don't believe that there's any quantitative mitigation in there in terms of money. You know, there's no money, you know, will, will they come back in the future and say, gee whiz, we'd like you to do X, Y, and Z? You know, it's always possible, okay? But at this point, it's, it's, the issue has been us addressing the chief concerns, which is sewer, and us providing improvements to their sewer system and holding tanks, and correct me if I'm wrong, and promise that we would address traffic.
And we do a traffic study that.
Let's talk about that then. Why then, in this MOA, would you think it's fair to base some decisions that affect Maynard on what Acton does?
Well, because if we.
You have no control over that, and that could, that could destroy what you've written as an MOA for us.
Well, again, it, it, just, my thought process or our thought process is simply, at the end of the day, for this project to be built, it has to get a comprehensive permit for both towns. So, if what you're saying to me is, well, if you don't get a comprehensive permit from Acton, but you do for Maynard, can you please pay us, in our version, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? That doesn't kind of work, okay? We can't build a project, all right? In the same way, if Acton decided to say we want mitigation of eight dollars and forty-three cents, and we, if, you know, but I don't get a comprehensive permit for Maynard, I can't build a project. So, I don't think it's unreasonable to say this is, all fits together. So, if I don't get a comprehensive permit from you, I'm not doing any mitigation from Acton, and, you know, vice versa. So, yes, I know you don't control Acton, and Acton doesn't control you, okay? And you, you being the Board of Appeals in Maynard, will make their own independent decision, and they may choose not to grant the permit, while Acton's Board of Appeals may choose to grant it. That being said, I can't build a project, or we can't build a project, without permits from two towns, all right? Now, if I was doing this and the entire project was in one town, then I wouldn't have had both towns. I would have said if I don't get a permit.
So, that gets back to the, the original point. Why not just divide it into two towns, two projects?
That would be such an easy.
We're very happy to work with you to develop a project in Maynard that is reasonably sized for Maynard, that is proper for our town, that gives us the necessity that we need for an MOA, that can make your guy money, that can be good for Maynard, that can be good for your developer, and everybody walks away happy. The issues that are going to come up here is because you're crossing town lines and causing all sorts of problems. Talk to Maynard, talk to Maynard alone, and build a project on, on Maynard's side of the property. It might be smaller than this, than the units that you want, but you might be able to get a good project out of that. And have you had that discussion with your, with your developer? Is he willing to talk about that? That's something I think, from my perspective, I'm ready to move on for that, because I want the affordable housing. I want the, the development along Route sixty-two. I want there to be a nice development there. But I don't want two hundred and thirty-eight units that cause all sorts of problems with water and sewer and, and whatever the hell else we've got going on. And I don't care about what Acton does, other than the fact that they might vote no and ruin our MOA. So, make it just Maynard.
And I guess I would only say, from a legalistic standpoint, and from somewhat a land planning standpoint, I appreciate what you're saying, David, but the realities are, is that if we had two standalone projects, you know, one X in Acton and Y in Maynard, they're next to each other. They, by definition, are going to share access, driveways, drainage. We can't.
Not if it's designed properly.
No, I, okay, again, I, I would respectfully submit that we can't independently design effectively a Maynard project and an Acton project that doesn't, in some way, forget about the water and sewer, even if we separate the buildings, which I don't think we can economically, but even if we separated the buildings, given the proximity that they would need, they're going to engineering, have to share, you know, drainage, access, water connections, sewer connection, utility connections. You know, we could segment the project, which is a MIPA term. We could segment the project, and Maynard project and Acton project. Technically, probably not economically, but I don't think how we could ever segment it from drainage or any of the other things.
Not drainage, no.
Not drainage, not parking. I mean, just think about it.
David, can I just make a comment why I think that, I mean, I think there's merits to that idea, but I also think it could negatively impact Maynard. By having the joint project, the good and the bad with it, at least we have the ability to control what happens on the Acton side. And the Acton side looks like it's in Maynard, so it's going to reflect upon our town. And if it's left to two separate projects, who's to say we're not going to have five hundred units on that Acton parcel? This at least gives us a little bit of control to negotiate.
Well, I, I would agree with Melissa that, A, we, I don't think we can do it, but even if we did, then you'd have, I think, the problem that Melissa says. You know, we would have eighty-story buildings in Acton, which you guys wouldn't like, and that's not.
Hearing what, hearing what Acton's comments were relative to this project, and their concerns about traffic, and hearing what Concord is saying and how they're going to approach it, I know that they're not involved in the project, but I'm sure you're aware they're now getting on board and starting to raise some issues about concerns. Acton would not approve a five hundred unit, I mean, come on.
I'm just using that to just.
And it's not going to be eighty-story, so, you know.
I meant that, you know, I didn't mean that in, in any kind of, you know, factual sense, David. I just meant picking up on her comment, they're not going to approve five hundred units. They're not going to approve an eighty-story building.
Right, so they can scale their size to their property line. We can scale our size to our property line. And this is 2018. We've got engineers that can take us to the moon or to Mars. I think they can figure out how to build a building in a, in a small land of a two and a half acre piece of land that doesn't cause hookup problems that require you to destroy an entire project. I think you're limiting your proposal in a way.
Well, again, if, if, it's a good exchange, and if the proposal, forget about the mitigation or the MOA, if that's what concerns you, then that's.
Well, the mitigation concerns me too, but before we get to mitigation, we need to know what project we're dealing with.
No, no, but I appreciate, you know, your honesty and your candid, if the board's concern is the project, you know, for the reasons that you stated, then we're, we're way, you know, we got a way to go before we get to discuss mitigation. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Because again, this is the first time we've had a discussion.
Okay, no, no, and I appreciate that, okay? So, that's something, if that's where the board, as a collective board, is, okay? Then, you know, we have to go back and decide if there's anything we can do, okay? But then mitigation tonight is really somewhat irrelevant. If we come back to you.
Yes, that's why I wasn't prepared to come tonight to talk about mitigation. I had redlined the whole thing myself.
But the mitigation, if you're telling me as a board, and that's where the board has to make a decision, that you want to see two separate, you want to see a Maynard project, I don't know if the board wants to do that, but I'm saying, as a board, we want to see a Maynard project, and we want to see an Acton project. Or at least we want to just see a Maynard project. You could care less about Acton, okay? Then we need to hear that, and then we need to decide, you know, with the applicant, what, if anything, we can do.
Either, either one, there's something we can do, which honestly, I'm not sure we can. Or two, that we've reached a point where we are fundamentally not going to agree sitting here, in which case then we will make a decision on best how to proceed under that basis.
And, you know, and that's just would be the professional gentleman way to go.
Yeah, and I think, I think the board would need to have that discussion.
No, you need to have it.
I think we want to have a, you know, give us opportunity to speak to the residents, speak to, you know, what, what would the residents prefer relative to the, the scale of the project?
That's a different issue, but you.
No, it's not, because, because by necessity, if you move the buildings, you are scaling the project down.
Well, again, I said to you, and Joel said most honestly, we don't think that we can have.
Forget that.
Forget about the scale of the buildings, okay? We don't think we can have, except.
It's not the scale of the buildings per se, it's the number of units.
It's a duplex. Yeah, we could have a duplex in Maynard, okay? But except for a duplex or a fourplex or an aplex, we can't have a significant number of units in Maynard and separate the project, okay? That's all we're saying. We, we've actually do, didn't.
We've looked at that. We've had a discussion with the owner. We've, that, that's taken.
Done economic modeling.
My perspective, this project could move swiftly with a discussion about Maynard-only issues and, you know.
David, I appreciate that, and what I'm saying to you is, just in concept, we can't, if we were to split the projects, which Joel and I firmly believe is not likely, and we were to split them so as to have a significant number of units on the genre of what we're proposing and trying to put them in Maynard, or even dropping the numbers, we don't think we could do it. But even if we did it, all right, it's going to, it, we're not, the only way we see it happening in Maynard is a standalone project is going to be, you know, a relatively insignificant number of units compared to what we're proposing now, which economically doesn't work for us. If that, now, you can say that's our problem, and I, you know, it is our problem. I got it. It's not your problem. But that's why we were trying to get through this on a friendly forty B. So, our alternatives are just to tell you that, and we're not going to do that tonight. And then, you know, troop off to the Board of Appeals with our application, essentially the way it is tonight, and, you know, let the hair fly where it flies, you know, right?
I, I thought it was a bad analogy when he said it, but, you know.
Don't call me buttercup. You reference.
Sunshine.
Can I have a question?
Didn't actually call him sunshine. He wasn't.
It shouldn't take long. You referenced earlier a hundred and eighty bedrooms?
Yes.
And from what I can see on the lip, it looks like we only would have a hundred and twenty-one bedrooms in Maynard.
If I grabbed off my sheet in the wrong way, then your record's off the lip. I apologize. I had a lot of big numbers going around today in our project, so I apologize.
No more than one sixteen.
One sixteen, yeah.
One sixteen.
Seventy-four, one sixteen.
There you go. I apologize once again, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
My numbers.
We knocked the project down by a third, so.
Yeah.
We, we, we've addressed David's comments right now, so it's a smaller project.
So, go ahead. You have.
So, Joel's going to do his homework and find out if there's a desire or an ability, an opportunity or any chance of this becoming two separate projects in two separate towns. Failing that, does anybody have any other questions or concerns about this MOA that we can talk about right now, or do you want to wait for that?
I had, I was going to say, I mean, I, I looked at the mitigations and things, so.
Want to talk about them? You can talk about them.
Sure. My, I mean, my, my, my personal opinion is that if we were reducing, you know, so we're handling Maynard now only as opposed to Maynard and Acton. But we're still, you know, as far as the sidewalks, as far as the traffic impacts, those all still actually exist. So, I, I mean, I kind of would like, I understand the pump station upgrades. I understand the jetter truck. I understand those types of things as far as, I would obviously love to see those in there if possible because it is still going to strain the system, you know, but it almost, it almost was an insult to me to see that the traffic impacts is down to fifty thousand sidewalk, and that's it. And that's just my own, that's my personal take on that.
And my response to that would be is that I looked at it from what we could afford to do. And I sat there, and we had had the benefit of doing a sewer analysis, and we had peer review reports, and they came up with a cost to upgrade the sewer line down to the pump station. So, it was really just because of that, if you want to shift the cost and say some is to road and some is to sewer, but the towns, you know, and we're just going to contribute a portion of them, it was really the total dollars. It was just my effort to try to take that and allocate it in a useful way because we're not in theory, well, I mean, the, you know, based on only seventy-nine units, we're not impacting the, the entire sewer system as we were when we're talking two hundred and fifty-four, yet we're still talking about trying to still improve the flows and correct the deficiencies in there that benefit many others. So, it's just a trade-off of how you want to portray it. If you want to divvied up differently, it was the number that we were working from.
I would, I would argue though, that, and I agree that, I, I see what you're saying, but I would, I would argue that we, the traffic impacts are still going to be significant regardless of whether or not we're providing sewer to the whole project or, or partial project because you're still going to have two hundred and fifty-four units there. So, that, you know, I'm, so what I'm saying is that, I guess what I'm saying is, I think that the four, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the relining is, is reasonable, but I, I really think that the additional two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars should stand of the traffic improvements.
If I can, if I can, excuse me one second. The only traffic improvements that came as a result of all the peer reviews was a discussion over whether a deceleration in turning lane would be required or not. We're not suggesting in this that if the ultimately, you know, through the process, that that takes place. That's a separate, those are typical association with it. Beyond that, it didn't identify, the peer review report that you all did, didn't suggest that there was any impact set to any other intersection in, in Maynard that, that were impacted by this, other than whether or not that was ultimately done. There was some discussion about realigning to closer to the Wendy's driveway. There were minor things that were just about how it could be better, but it was nothing else identified during that study.
So then, why is on the old MOU, the Powder Mill Road, Waltham Street signal is, under traffic impacts, is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for that?
I don't remember that being in there whatsoever.
There was, under traffic impacts, under financial contributions, the first, the first one under traffic impacts is Powder Mill Road, Waltham Street signal, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then the sidewalks on Powder Mill Road was a hundred thousand dollars.
First off, we never did anything with that, and that was based at two hundred and fifty-four, and it came as a result of the controversial, we'll call, work group, where it was suggested that a contribution of X dollars, but then broken up in this fashion, would be appropriate. It wasn't our conclusion of any traffic study, it wasn't anything else. It was just trying to take at the time a sum of money and to allocate it to different things, such as the bleachers and, and this and that, in, in an effort to try to sprinkle it into other projects. But they were not projects that necessarily, that the project was impacting. It just was other things that the town had on its head.
Just to Justine's point, the, the point she's trying to make is that Maynard is going to get impacted with the, with the traffic flow coming out of this complex. So, it's going to affect us more than Acton, and, and that's what, Justine, I think you're trying to.
We need to be able to be compensated and, or some, you got to work some kind of mitigation here that we could work with us, because that's going to be a hassle with that traffic.
Well, there's two issues you've identified there. One is what happens safely to move traffic around out of the project. That's totally separate. That's a safety issue that we dealt with, whatever along the frontage is required to make those safe movements. The traffic study does identify that the more than half, I think it was seventy-five percent, actually the traffic turns right into Acton and does not go.
Joel, I think that you've sort of addressed one of the questions that I had, and I can check it off my list, so I don't have to ask.
I've accomplished something there.
Check it off.
No, no, I don't mean it that way. I have, it raised a question that I can ask. The fifty thousand dollars that Justine has referenced, and I agree with Justine's observations relative to that dollar amount, but I'm assuming, but please confirm, that that did not intend to include the work that you're going to be doing along. to include the work that you're going to be doing along the frontage of the property anyway?
No, well, the, the work that you have to do in the frontage to create a safe movement out of, out of the, of the, the street, whatever that is, there was no, there was no identified traffic signal that this would, wouldn't qualify for a warrant article.
My question is, does the $50,000 include work that you're going to have to do?
No, the $50,000 was for sidewalks or crossings.
It's in addition to.
In addition, in addition to.
David, the, the point I was trying to make, and I was trying to make to Justine, and I apologize, is that's over and above any requirements that would be correctly and rightfully imposed by the state, in terms of what their requirements are going to be, turning lanes, improvements, et cetera. You asked me about Acton, one of the things that Acton wants is a traffic study, we indicated that we had done a traffic study, but we, it had dealt with a smaller piece of road, they want the traffic study to be expanded, to have a bigger piece of road, including, you know, the road that, as it goes into Acton, which then immediately goes into Concord. So the reality is that the traffic study we're going to have to do, and probably definitely have to do for the state, isn't going to cover all of the applicable areas of Maynard, Concord line, and if somebody has a, traffic engineer rationally thinks it should go past the Concord line, pass the Concord line. I'm not saying that they do. People in Acton have complained that you're, I think you're all generally familiar with High Street, that's a street that goes up, you know, up the hill towards South Acton, so the people who live way up on High Street, way near the train station, are all telling us, we're going to have traffic up there, and High Street's backed up.
Actually about half an hour to get through there right now.
Yeah, right, and so they want us to look at that. So the traffic improvements, or the $50,000, has zero to do with what David started to say, is the traffic that we're going to be fixing up in front of our property, the traffic improvements that are going to be required by the state and the Board of Appeals to make the project safe. Those are, that's some cost, okay, that's it, it's going to happen, and, like I said, you know, and the comment about Concord, with all due respect to Concord, when they got to Concord Muse, they didn't call Maynard up.
They did, and Maynard failed to attend.
No, what I'm saying is, but it was okay when they built.
They did.
Concord Muse on the Sudbury, Maynard, Acton line, and the traffic only pretty much funnels through Acton and Maynard.
They did call Maynard, and that's part of the reason why I'm so concerned that we get our proper due.
No, you should, you should.
Because with the Muse project, Maynard was not at the table.
Yeah.
Our fault.
No, the $50,000 was, there was a discussion about connectivity of sidewalks in Maynard, there was some discussion about whether a crossing should be put in, you know, in some fashion, so the $50,000 was purely money for that in, in work yet to be defined, or.
The crossing, the crossing would be right in front of your property, that shouldn't be our responsibility.
There could be a cross in there, David, but then again, the condo doesn't line up further down, who knows, maybe the crossing's down further, the point is, it was $50,000 was intended in some fashion to help improve the pedestrian connectivity along Powder Mill.
Because I know that you've been informed that in the last, I think it's 15 years, there have been two traffic fatalities involving pedestrians in Maynard. Both of them occurred right at that location, with nobody living there, and the, the crosswalks basically are the exact same that you're proposing, based on your traffic study, to leave there, with now 280 units there, and people are supposed to cross, and we've had two traffic fatalities, the only two in town, right there. So something needs to be done, regardless of what.
The state may, and, you know, you have the right to, you know, you know, make comments to the state, and we may.
Well, that's another question for, for you, is, your, your MOA, or MOU throughout that section references the DOT. Is, Aaron, is, is Powder Mill Road a DOT-controlled road?
No, it's controlled by the town.
So why would the DOT have anything to do with the, your, your reference in here consistently says, based on DOT approval, based on, a DOT has nothing, but again, you've been asking us, you've been asking us.
Okay, but again, it, I was dealing with the set of facts that I was given, is, do you know if 62 in Acton is controlled by Acton or DOT?
I can't speak for Acton.
Okay, nor could I, okay? So if, but again, that's.
But I know that Maynard, Maynard Route 62 is not controlled by the DOT, let me finish, and this is where my frustration comes from. You've presented to us an MOU that includes documents, indications in there that, that some of the mitigation will be dependent upon whether the DOT approves something. The DOT has nothing to do with this.
Okay, as I sit here tonight, with your DPW director here, which is much more expertise than I am, okay, he says, and I, you know, I'll take it from him, and no doubt in mind he's correct, that 62 is not, you know, controlled by DOT, as I sit here tonight, I don't know that's the case for the Acton portion, it may be, okay?
But I don't care about Acton, as I said before.
But we do, because I can't build the project, okay, but if somebody.
And one entry is on the Acton side of the line.
That's, that's a tactic's concern.
Well, I understand that, but so, that's where the records came.
But if somebody comes back to me, and we've, you know, and somebody says to me that Acton is, you know, the jurisdiction of 62 in Acton is, is subject.
So then why would Acton's DOT compliance have anything to do with Maynard's MOU? It should not, it, we have nothing to do with the, with the DOT.
Again, it goes back to, if I can't get the necessary permits to build the project in its entirety, then obviously the applicant wouldn't be making the payment to you, all right? So if, if in fact DOT has jurisdiction, and if they don't, I apologize, okay? But if they don't, if they do have jurisdiction, all right, then we need to get a approval or a permit from them, okay? And if I do, and I can't, I can't build the project.
Lou, can I just ask you a question on that? If DOT controls the Acton portion of Powder Mill Road.
I don't know that they do.
I'm just saying, like hypothetically, if they controlled the Acton portion, and Maynard controls the Maynard portion, would the entire project have to get a DOT permit in that situation?
But what happened is, Melissa, best I can imagine, okay, and again, I haven't, we haven't done this, gone that far at this point yet, is that if there was a deceleration lane or something that involved a change in the wither pavement area on the Maynard side, but it continued because the other entrance was on the Acton side, they have an interrelationship.
No, no, I understand, that's why I was asking, like, if that was the case, I assume like, the higher authority would have to still be applied for, for a permit.
Correct.
Yeah, that.
The same way is, I don't know what the status is, do you know whether 62 in, in Concord is?
I, I highly doubt that either 62 in Acton or Concord.
Right, so then DOT may just disappear?
Yeah.
If that's the case, you just cross it out, okay? I agree with him, it's unlikely we go from Maynard to a state rotor, okay? I agree, but that's an easy fix.
It may be, but you understand why, as I'm reading through this and redlining and making my points, that I see DOT all over this, and I'm saying, nobody's asked us about DOT.
Again.
And, you know, it's, it's an irrelevant point now, because we've, I think we've confirmed that DOT isn't involved, but these, these are, are, I.
To your point, David, I think you're asking us to approve something that really, tonight, there's no way we could approve unless we go back to the drawing board. So, so basically what we need, I'm, from my perspective, I would like to see, come back with, with two separate, you know, projects, one in Maynard and one in Acton, that's what I would like to see, and I think that would solve a lot of these issues, in my opinion.
As I said, and I'm being honest about it, Armin, is that economically, I don't think that that works, okay? So if what you're suggesting is if we can't come back with two projects, because economically it doesn't work, and if it doesn't make, it doesn't work for us, you know, physically, then that's okay, if you feel that way, then we know that if we can't do it, there's no reason to come, there's no reason necessary to come back, okay, is my point. And that becomes from your perspective, and I respect it, a deal killer, in which case then understandable, and that's fine, and we know that.
Well, that's not friendly, see, this is what I'm talking about, we're here talking friendly.
I know.
So, so, so you're saying.
Appreciate you also being honest with you too.
So I understand that, but you're threatening us, so what you're, basically what you're saying is, if it's not going, this is a deal breaker, well.
No, no. Armin, I was trying to express, you asked me to come back with two, and I'm telling you, if I can't make one economically work.
Right.
Then there's nothing.
I'm sure you can.
All right, and another, another comment relative to the traffic.
Yes.
As you probably know, Maynard has, has become a complete streets community. Therefore, we have promised the Commonwealth, even though DOT's not involved, we have promised the Commonwealth through the Complete Streets program that we will do, every time we build a development, we will do certain things. Your mitigation does not allow us to do all the things that we are obligated by the state to do. So you're going to ask us to put in a project that then, because of our requests, or because of our involvement in the Complete Streets program, that is good for the residents, good for, for people who live there, because it helps people mobilize in multi, multi ways, you're not mitigating that whatsoever, and guess who pays that bill? Not you guys, not the developer, the taxpayers of Maynard would pay that bill. So therefore, as part of your mitigation, I would respectfully ask that you review the Complete Streets process and the program, and add into this project all that requires, that would be required from Maynard, I don't care about Acton, their Complete Streets program too, I would imagine they would want the same thing, but everything that meets our obligations because of what your, your developer wants to put in there. We ask that from every developer now when they come into Maynard, because we're part of the.
We have no problem looking at that.
The part of the complete, but that's a hell of a lot more than, than $50,000, I would guess.
Again, it, it just, typically when we, when we do mitigation agreements, you know, host agreements, whatever you want to call them, the developer agrees to pay X dollars to the town of Q. It's not broken out. The town says, you know, we want $127, we want $127 million, or some number in between. The allocation and the use of that money is determined.
How did you come up with this theory then, in this, in this time around? Why did you split it up that way?
Because what Joel did is, based on the working group, there was a wish list in the working group. We want this, and this, and this, and this, and this, okay? And we took that wish list, and we crossed off, or Joel crossed off things, and left what was within the context. But I would agree, David, that if there is a mitigation agreement, okay, that the simplest way is that Maynard says, you know, how you figure out, you know, sidewalks or this, or, you know, sewer, you say, we want this amount of money. How you use it, the developer doesn't really care, and it's typically the way mitigation and host agreements are drafted, it's, because things change. We may in both sides of this table say, okay, we're going to put so many dollars into sewer, but something changes, and you don't need to put the money into the sewer, you know what I mean? So you say, well, I don't want to be stuck with this now in this some agreement, you know, I want to be able to take the sewer money and go pick up my baseball field, or, you know, whatever, you know what I mean? So, you know, so that's why I would agree that, you know, make this a lot simpler, just come to a sum certain, that, you know, you understand, the public understands, you know, it's X dollars, developer pays it, you know, and where it goes, bleachers, sidewalks, you know, that's totally within the discretion of the, of Maynard community, no one else.
In this case, I would think that, and obviously the board opines on their own, but I would think that we would actually want two different buckets, because we would want it bifurcated in some way, because we, there are certain monies that have to go to our, to our, our sewer and water enterprise fund, versus the stuff that goes to John. I know that's not your business, but I'm just saying.
And I'm saying.
So.
Sure it is.
As part of the number, though, you said, you said like 20 minutes or so, that you came up with the $525,000, because that's what your client could afford? So are you representing tonight that that's his final number, in terms of a package to Maynard, no matter how we allocate it, or is he willing to negotiate at this point?
That is a number I was authorized to come and put into a document to you, Melissa. If you have something else in mind, then I'm, of course, going to take it back to my client.
It's, I'm still concerned about the Section 3 further down, because I think all the money, no matter what number I come to, is obsolete. So it's Section 3b3, it says, owner shall make payments set forth above only if owner in its sole and absolute discretion proceeds with the construction of the project. That part's fine, but then it goes on to say, provided however, owner, owner shall not be required to pay any of the $525,000, as a force ad, if owner A appeals the Maynard Zoning Board of Appeals comprehensive permit, or the Housing Appeals Committee, or the Conservation Commission's order, or, after a lot of other stuff, the town in any way opposes issuance of any state or federal permit for the project. So that takes a lot of this out of our control as a board, and leaves it up to the owner. So if he takes some affirmative action against what a zoning board appeals.
Don't get a dime.
Does, we lose all that money. So I, I just don't think that's fair, I think that's too much of a penalty to put on the town.
Let me ask you a question, though, is, is that, being that it's also not in your control either, what if the ZBA independently puts on to the developer a set of conditions that are unreasonable, whatever those might be, okay? And does that mean at that point that they're stuck with the unreasonable conditions that they may or may not be able to afford to do, and then still obligated? So the language in here is really intended to deal with the fact that we don't know yet the outcome of the ZBA, nor what it may impose on the project for its conditions, and they could be anything.
And I see that, but that's one extreme, and the way you've written this is.
Okay, I, I can answer it just very quickly, to save some time. I drafted it representing the developer.
Right, and I'm, I'm just saying this.
So, I clearly.
He's right.
Okay, I clearly hear what you're saying.
Right.
There, you know, I asked for the most that I can ask for. I would expect reasonably that some of what you said, or you're concerned with, you know, I can live with it being cut back, so I don't think we have an issue there, okay? All right, I, I, again, just when I'm drafting it.
No, and I understand that, since we don't have counsel there, I'm the next closest thing to an attorney in the room.
No, but I agree with you that it, it can be modified.
Okay.
To be, you know, more town.
There's a compromise that can be reached.
That's not a problem, that's not a problem at all.
So, and I realize that I'm, I'm new to the whole negotiation part, but to me, you know, I really did, you know, I depend on our, our attorneys and, and people much smarter than me to look at, you know, the legal lease of a lot of this MOA, but I'm disappointed to hear that you did try to get as much as you can into it. You know, I'm perfectly fine talking about mitigations and things like that, because that's what I know and what I understand, but it sounds like with what you just said, that, you know, you're trying to get what you can and slip what is, slip something by.
No, not at all.
No.
Not at all.
No, it's, it's a drafting art of attorneys, that, that they, they often, depending on who drafts the document, in a landlord-tenant relationship, if the landlord does it, I could assure you there's language in it that's more favorable to the landlord, if the tenant does it, they're going to put languages more favorable, and it just, it just, it's just the way it works.
I think the concepts, the concepts, and we don't need to debate it tonight, I think the concepts that I put in there have, you know, we have concerns about, you know.
As I just expressed, what happened.
I wouldn't, I'm not representing to Melissa that I would agree to gut out the entire thing, but I think, you know, that town council could come back and make suggestions that I could look at and potentially recommend to my client.
Given that even after we approve this, there's going to go to the ZBA and other boards and commissions that can set things in place, and there's opportunities for other dispute, I'd like to see somewhere worked into this, some kind of ADR clause, to save the town and you guys on lead fees.
I'm all in favor of that.
Okay.
Can you explain the ADR?
Just alternative dispute resolution clause, that either something goes to mediation or arbitration before going up to a litigious level.
I, I, I agree with that, with that suggestion, if, if we get that far, it's always, you know, it's always helpful to have some mediator in the room.
No problem with that.
Don't take offense by his drafting, I, I read these all day long, so.
Let me ask you this, and this is a technical question, that I just want to make sure that I fully understand, it's, and I know we're bouncing around, and I, but under the terms of agreement, you, you have residential apartments, and it talks about how many units there would be, then it says, 19 of the dwelling units constructed within the project in Maynard shall be made available for rent for the longest period permitted by law to individuals or families earning less than 80% of the median income of Maynard, as that figure is determined from time to time by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So because, I assume this, this applies only to the Maynard units that are affordable, and then that's a different formula than what is used for 40B typically, from my understanding, it's a regional formula.
Okay, um.
So if we add, go ahead, so.
Like, I, number one is, Joel gave me a template that allegedly came from your town before, okay?
Correct.
Yes.
From where? From where?
Your town.
Your town. The one, the other project you did a memorandum agreement, somebody had, the previous town administrator had given me that as an example and said, hey, you might use this as a framework, it might make drafting.
It might have been Parker Street, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it was Parker Street.
I mean, this template is not my template.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, but I would say...
The reason I ask that is because there has been some concern expressed about the socioeconomic aspect of Acton versus Maynard and residents in Acton being, somebody living in Maynard being charged the same rent as somebody living in Acton and, you know...
They will be.
And that's understood, although some realtors, some realtors have expressed...
That's an mistake in there because the, and again, that came from the template and I apologize and I didn't pick it up, but forty B uses eighty percent of the SMA area, which is...
Yeah, for the region, not for the Maynard.
For the region. No, no, I agree. So it, you know, so that should say...
As I read it, it almost appeared as if you were saying we're going to have a special rate for the Maynard folks.
No, well, again, that could work for Maynard's favor, you know, this favor, I don't know, depending on what the overall, you know, but that, forty B is based on, you know, probably the Boston metropolitan area. So if you go a little bit further west and you get into the west areas, it goes down quite a bit.
Yeah, I get that. Because to the point earlier, and I don't want to keep us here all night, but to the point earlier, there have been some realtors that have expressed concern about the idea that somebody would rent an apartment with children in Acton versus, in Maynard rather, the next door to a, to an apartment that is renting, charging the same rent and their kids are going to Acton Boxborough Schools versus the other kids going to Maynard Schools.
That's a different issue.
And a realtor has said that's very difficult to believe that somebody would do that, whether, and I'm not dissing the Maynard Schools, I love the Maynard Schools.
No, but that's, that's the owner's problem, not, not yours, if it is a problem. And I'm not in any way saying it is a problem.
Yeah.
So we're obligated and are providing ten percent of the units for three-bedroom families as required under forty B in Maynard.
And in Acton.
And in Acton, so both are doing the same, and we are staying to the same form, eighty percent of median household income in both communities. So those numbers are rock solid. What then a renter's choice to where they want to live, I, we, that's, that's a, that's a down-the-road issue, but the formulas will be the formulas.
So that would have to be changed, obviously. Let me, obviously, we have not made any Maynard mitigation requests or comments tonight, but I want to make a comment relative to something that Maynard says, you know, here's something that we'd like to think about for mitigation and ask in formal discussion, since there's never been a formal discussion. How confident are you, Joel, that the number of schoolchildren from, if, say this project goes through as proposed, and I think the number of schoolchildren that's been indicated is eleven, how confident are you in that?
I'm pretty confident to the number, and I think Judy Barrett on your behalf looked at it as well, too, she came up with twelve.
Okay.
So we're still in the same ballpark, and again, I can't tell you a family who has some children, whether given the opportunity to live on one side of the town line or not, what they will do, David, so the answer is that's for yours to judge whether or not...
Here's my proposed, here's my proposed mitigation, so that you have some, your client has some skin in the game and that Maynard can have some trust in these numbers. Part of the MOA, if ever, the number of schoolchildren living on the Maynard side of the project should exceed eleven students, there will be a five hundred thousand dollar donation to the Maynard School Department. Would your client be willing to take that risk based on the guarantee or the comfortableness that you just expressed relative to, so a five hundred thousand dollar guaranteed forever in the MOU going to the Maynard School Department, should there be more than eleven students?
No, because I can't predict...
But you've just told us that you're very comfortable.
Excuse me, David, I read the studies, your school board reads the studies, Judy read the, read studies, from that we extrapolate and look at the statistics behind it, and the statistics indicate that based on that, that we're going to have eleven to twelve children based on the number of bedrooms and their configuration in town.
And all I'm asking is to support that statistic.
The answer is that to sit there and to put something in perpetuity that says that should something happen in the future, I think that's an unreasonable burden.
In many ways, you're asking us to put things into perpetuity with the expectation that'll happen with many of your proposals to us, are you not?
David, the only thing I would say to you is if this project proceeds one way or another as a forty B, the effect on the population of either school department, school district is not a consideration that the Board of Appeals can...
And I'm not suggesting that...
No, no, so I'm saying that, so if we go to the Board of Appeals...
Yep.
And someone raises their hand and says, this project is not going to have eleven kids.
I'm not suggesting that it is, I'm just suggesting that it's part, as part of the way to get us to approve to...
Okay, but we're kind of getting to the fork in the road here where if...
We don't have leverage to ask for that, is what it comes down to.
If we're getting to the fork in the road here and, you know, hypothetically, you want to add five hundred thousand dollars to the mitigation package if there's twelve kids beyond everything else and the mitigation package economically just doesn't work or we can't agree to that, or we can't finance it, we probably couldn't, then we get to the fork in the road and we just can't, you know, we can't do this, and we walk away shaking hands, but we just can't make a deal. So that's all I'm trying to say. I can mitigate structural issues, safety issues, sidewalk issues, I can do that, but the number of kids going to the school, and look, I would never reach across the table and say, if we don't have eleven kids but we have eight, will you give us five hundred thousand dollars back?
Couldn't be part of the deal.
Okay, well...
Do you understand that nobody is, like, the town administrator hasn't made that proposal, the town administrator hasn't suggested that you...
We're just sitting here having a discussion.
Hasn't made that suggestion, correct?
No, no, I understand this...
So you just say you want to stand.
Yeah, no, 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 we're just...
I'm not expecting, and I don't know if David expects you to go back to the developer and ask that question or not, but certainly I don't think anyone else sitting up here does.
But it certainly has been, it certainly has been utilized in other forty B developments elsewhere in the Commonwealth, that specific...
Well, if you can provide them, I'm not aware of it.
It was recently actually enacted, and I believe it was Milford.
I don't know, I've done most of the projects in Acton, so I'm not aware of it.
The woman that made the suggestion and did the thing was our consultant, that we asked to do the, do it, so it's not his consultant, it's our own consultant?
No, there was a study that the consultant agreed with.
Judy Barrett, Judy Barrett.
Yeah, she agreed with the...
She, she worked, she was working for us, but paid by him.
No, I get that.
She said twelve and I said eleven, but that's just a statistical, you know...
As to Acton, I have, you know, again, I've been involved in almost every forty B in Acton.
No, no, I'm not suggesting that they have, but it is, has been used in other communities relative to...
And I know of no community.
I know that.
If you provide it for me.
I just read it in the media.
Can I just make a suggestion, just given that it's getting late and since we really can't redline this and come back to you with a counterproposal without town council fully weighing in?
Sure, that's what I said at the beginning.
I was just thinking, Greg, if we could have Adam come to the twentieth meeting, is that possible, and we could continue this discussion? Okay. I was just thinking if we could have a discussion with the board and Adam so that Adam can finish redlining, we have a comprehensive second draft to get back to Joel by the following meeting, I think that would be the most productive strategy, and then we can, you know, I think we've hashed out a lot tonight, but we could give our comments directly to Adam in a public setting, so people can hear what we're talking about.
Actually, you might consider going to executive session, such as negotiating, but that's up to you, I don't really care.
Yeah, so we...
We promised the community we would not.
We promised to do this in a public...
Okay, again, then don't, I don't care, I just...
Because I just don't think...
But I think your suggestion, Melissa, is a good one because I think you need to have a dialogue, because even outside of us, honestly, we don't even need to be here, which is first, what you guys want to do, and then we'll come back afterwards and hopefully we'll be provided that in advance of the meeting.
As long as it qualifies under one of the seven categories.
I would just ask that, like, in the interim between...
Again, I'm not, I'm not giving that advice, but...
Just for you, Joel, just in the interim between now and the twentieth, when we meet again as a board, if you could perhaps get back to Greg directly about your client's answer to David and Armin's question about the two separate developments, then at least we know if that's off the table and what we have to work with in the significant goal forward.
Exactly what I was going to suggest.
That's a fair way to communicate it back.
You're not suggesting that these guys are here the twentieth.
No, 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 just that they email him and let him know.
That on the twentieth, you guys in a public forum...
That sounded like a, that sounded like an urgent, no.
Have a discussion with your own council, and that we don't, we don't sit in the audience and make faces or do whatever, so, you know...
I think that's our next meeting.
By the beginning of next week, we will communicate with Greg as to whether or not we can do anything along the lines that Armin and David suggested about bifurcating or creating separate projects. So David will know that, I mean, Greg will know that, and he can communicate that to the board, then the board can decide, you know, how it wishes to proceed on a plan.
So to close tonight, well, besides which, when would we get together next, we'll be, you'll, you'll put us in the queue as well.
I think Adam would have to get back to you with the full redlines after we meet on the twentieth, and then you'd have time to review that, and then we'd get you on a following agenda to have another group discussion like this.
That's fine.
It's my proposal, I mean.
So David and Armin, you both made suggestions which, whether or not, you know, where we go with it, are there other things like that that we should take and also consider? I'd rather take the whole list now, I don't care if they're off, David, whatever they are.
No, but when, you know, things come up when we, if we have a meeting with Adam, which we haven't had specifically on this, that may generate some other...
Well, that may generate other things there, but your idea, for instance, of five hundred thousand for twelve students...
I have no other mitigation suggestions right now.
Fine. Armin, Justine, you have any other mitigation suggestions that we need to economically go back to our client, and so he gets to make a decision holistic rather than in...
I think, I think my message would be that, as Justine said earlier, we're a bit disappointed in the number that came in, with the total totality of the number that came in.
Okay.
And we would leave it up to your client to determine what might be enough to, at least I would.
I would propose that we do it in a counter offer in the red line.
I think, you know, we, you know, we came in with, we believe, with a good faith offer.
They're not going to bid against themselves, yeah.
I think in like in any negotiation, you come back with what you think is fair and we either negotiate or we give up.
Right, I mean, if I were you, I would have bid against myself.
No, no, I appreciate that.
The move is for us to make an offer.
Who has any good to bid against themselves?
And, and we will assume, to make it simpler for the moment, it's going back to Lou's suggestion, well, first, let's deal with where you want it to be, split up between categories is a second issue. I think the first issue is the number, and how it then gets split up afterwards is, it could be as much science as political, whatever the case might be, and we could decide that after.
The last thing I'll say, and I don't mean to resurrect the school thing, I mean, I'm very familiar with the schools, I'm very familiar with Maynard, Maynard has a brand new high school, a brand new middle school. Maynard schools are way closer to this project, way closer than the Acton schools are, okay? You know, you're as far as you can get away from the Acton schools. So the idea, and I don't have any problem with the, you know, Maynard schools, I don't know than anybody else does, okay? So the idea that somebody is going to schlep their kid, you know, and live in this project and schlep them to the high school, which might be four miles away, you know, five miles away, four, five miles away, the Acton High School, as opposed to, you know, be able to quickly go down to your high school, you know, or your middle school?
Presumably, there would be a bus that would come and pick those kids up.
But it's a long ride, I'm just going to tell you, it's a, and all the, if you look around, the elementary schools in Acton are all, you know, on the wayside away from this project, you know, that, you know, they're, they're where the high school is or even further away, or the Conan School, which is really on the other side. So the idea that Maynard schools won't be appealing to people living in this project, I think, you know, people will be surprised.
Well, and I, I think people should look at the Maynard schools, too.
No, I agree.
But your argument is sort of counter because some of the concern that the people are having is that there, there might be too much of an influx of children into the school system that will overwhelm our schools, that's the problem.
Well, no, but I'm just saying...
Not that our schools are bad.
No, no, there's nothing wrong with your school, I just think it's going to be equilibrium, that's all I'm saying, is, you know, I don't think it's, that they're going to populate the way they populate, and the numbers that we've used are going to hopefully be, you know, relevant.
You know, they're based on larger population statistics, so that's the only thing we can go by.
Okay?
Okay, well, thank you all.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And by the way, this is why I haven't been coming to these meetings.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Budget Message. Did we approve this last night?
No.
No, we never approved it.
No, we have to approve it now, we were just disgusted.
It is your budget message, Mr. Chairman.
No?
Tuesday.
Did you approve it? No, I thought we approved it, I was fine with the budget message that we saw last night.
No, I mean, you did vote, it wasn't on the agenda to vote, it was only to the developer to, to have any recommendations or revisions to be approved this evening.
Let me say that I make a motion, we move to approve the fiscal year 2020 budget message.
As developed last night?
It's developed on Monday.
Yeah, Monday.
Whatever it was.
Who seconded?
Second.
Armin.
He can have it.
I could have it.
Your words.
But if there's any discussion about it, but I thought, I thought we had, so we just didn't officially vote on it.
Yeah, exactly.
Does anybody have any, do we have any changes?
I think my comment last night...
Yeah, I think I'm happy with it.
Yeah, it's good.
Oh, is it fair?
What the budget subcommittee saw.
Yeah, we showed the town administrator, you put, town administrator report, that was great, thanks, moving on.
I have a question on, I have a question on the town administrator.
I didn't see the town administrator.
There's a reason why Steph is here, just so you know.
Yeah, well, that's...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Poor Steph.
My, my comments are not directed at Stephanie or nor are they directed at any personality, but here's my, my question or concern. I, obviously, I also don't in any way want to step on your ability to develop your office and whatever, but we just approved the budget message that says no additions to staff. I realize this is not an addition to staff.
Correct.
How about salary? Is there an addition to salary, and if so, how does it fit into our budget, and then what's the future impact relative to this job change, or is it more or less just a shifting of a job title?
That's a fair question. So it would not be shifting of a job title, it would be each job change, I would be establishing a new position, and it, and I have not, I have not promised it to one person, I just want to make that clear. I would be establishing a position and vacating the current town administrator's executive assistant position, although I do have a strong candidate in mind. So the, the salary would be attributed to that new position. That being said, I am no longer paying Andrew Scrivener clean, and he was, according to his contract, he would be making a certain amount of money. My, my concept would be to, our proposal, although I'm still working out with my guzzler with the finance director, is to compensate this new HR coordinator, this proposed HR coordinator, using a certain percentage of that delta between the, what I wasn't going to be paying Andrew Scrivener clean, and then what I think would be appropriate for this new HR coordinator. And I would imagine there would still be money left over.
But from a budgetary standpoint, moving forward, does that impact us because now we have two higher level positions?
No, they're the same people.
Assuming you would plan on filling the assistant town administrator's role, which I assume you do based on the fact that you've got a job...
Same number of FTEs.
I get that, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about salaries. How does it...
I know, I'm not conveying this properly, so that's fair. So it's the same number of FTEs, but if I pay the ATA, the next one, not as much as I pay Andrew, I have a certain amount of delta. With that delta, I would, I would propose to pay a certain amount of that delta to the new HR coordinator, but that still remains a certain savings. Not significant, I'm not talking a full FTE's worth, sure, but there is a certain savings. Now, we've already appropriated for Andrew's, we've already appropriated FY nineteen for Andrew's salary.
Yeah, I get that, I get that it's covered in next year's, I guess that it's covered in this year's budget and next year's budget I'm sure will be covered in. I'm worried about the long-term effects when those, because the new ATA that comes in, that continues to escalate or whatever, and so is there an impact on long-term budgeting concerns relative to salaries for, and I realize it's not an additional position, but it's an additional administrative position?
Okay, no, I think that's a fair point, and I think I have, in my guzzler, have been taking into consideration the long-term impacts of establishing a new position. However, my, my overall vision for my, as I assume this position, and, and my vision has been sort of formulated and developed throughout my town administrator search committee process, through interviews with individual members of the board, and as well as now my time, my experience is here, I believe an HR coordinator position is well warranted, I believe an HR coordinator position is well-warranted, and I think it would provide that, this sort of professionalism that I think that the town could use at this point. Andrew Skirner clean was a remarkable administrator, and he was able to handle the great majority of the HR responsibilities. But I don't have Andrew, and I can't replace Andrew with the same, it would be unlikely to replace Andrew with a new Andrew that has 30 years' worth of municipal experience and four years of Maynard experience.
At that salary.
And then what happens, what happens to the administrative assistant?
My staff resources I would need.
What happens to the administrative assistants' role when you need to have, you know, that type, the stuff that used to be handled by that role?
Uh huh.
Where does that go?
It's still there.
It's going to be, yeah.
So, as I propose.
One person is going to be handling both.
This person will be handling all of the.
Handling both, right.
All right.
Is that, so Becky Moss is the current.
I missed that aspect.
So she would, she would then, basically, I'm formalizing what she currently does, which is both the board's administrative assistant, as well as the town administrator's assistant, right? She sees me every day of the week, we work together 99% of the time. She sees you all formally twice a month. And I'm not to say that she won't be just as devoted and committed to your needs as she would be regardless. I am just trying to formalize the true distribution of her tasks. And I've had conversations with her, that we've been working out what responsibility she currently has and what tasks she currently has, in order to not overwhelm her with this new sort of expectation of splitting her responsibilities to myself as well. And I believe, through my professional analysis, that this would be a better distribution of the town administration's and board's elected offices' resources. But I have, I don't disagree with the questions that you're asking, David. I think those are the.
And I'm not, I'm not objecting to it, I'm just making sure it's been analyzed. Because again, the way that the structure is in Town Hall is completely your, you know, on your guidance.
But I don't mind justifying it, right.
And I'm, you know, I'm okay, as long as those issues have been thought about and considered.
Yeah, that's true. And I'd also want to point out that these are the draft job descriptions. I have not yet finalized it, but I've been in talks with not only the staff, but as well as the community. And those members that were, that sat in on the town administrator's committee, so they kind of give me their perspective as to my strengths and weaknesses, and who might be a good fit for the future assistant town administrator, as well as the goals and priorities of the board. And then as I was looking at all those and taking those traits in consideration, I felt like an HR coordinator position was well-warranted. But then I had to kind of go through the logistical concerns of how do we pay for this position with a long-term impact. So I completely agree, but I.
As I said at the outset, this had nothing to do with personalities.
No, 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 sure. Yes, correct. I believe this is worth the investment, and I think the return on this investment of establishing an HR coordinator will provide dividends. Want to talk about anything else in my town administrator report? I have.
Nope.
Can I just say quickly? As it's been in the past, as I have been done in the past, the day before the Town Hall closes for the November 21st Thanksgiving.
Eve.
Want to make sure I'm getting these right.
Wednesday.
Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Thanksgiving Eve.
It's November 21st this year.
Yeah.
Right.
I would propose to close Town Hall at 12:30.
That's fine.
Any objections?
Nope.
Nope.
Fair enough.
One other comment on your report, just while we're on it, and I just wanted to say, Stephanie, thank you for the jack-o'-lantern.
Oh, big time.
They were amazing.
Yeah, you were, that was awesome.
There was so much buzz in the community about how awesome it was, so I hope it just gets bigger each year, and kudos to you for standing outside all those next year's Hall. So.
I'm a little hurt, I didn't get a ribbon, though.
Did you have one in there?
You didn't put, you didn't.
You didn't see my pumpkin?
You were late.
I saw.
I was late.
I didn't know who's anybody's.
I was late, and my pumpkin, my pumpkin got squashed.
That was the one that was, the squirrel got to.
Something to work towards next year.
It was actually very impressive.
Right there, baby, Red Sox helmet.
Oh, that was yours, I didn't see that.
Oh, that's cool.
Anyways.
I didn't vote for it.
I got here too late, I got here too late, anyway.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I would reiterate, that was awesome.
Yeah, it was very good.
Lots of happy people and lots of happy kids who get the orange ribbon, which I got one. But.
I'm going to get an orange ribbon for next year.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so Veterans Day Parade, y'all have a long underwear if you're going to march in the parade Sunday. It's the gathering out back here at 10 o'clock, they're leaving at 10:30, they're asking for one of us to speak. I've done it in the past on Veterans Day, but if there's anybody that would like to do that, they certainly can, and I'll step aside, but if not, I'll do it. And it's, so it's 10:30, no, it leaves at 10:30.
No, no.
Leaves at 11?
Off at 11:00 AM, 11:00.
Oh, so they started?
Yeah.
All right, so they get here at 10:30?
Yeah, assemble.
That's not what her email just said, but okay.
We can verify.
So anyway, so it's 10:30 here, leaves at 11, so. It's going to be cold, it's going to be higher of 40 degrees, lower of 25.
I will probably be there.
So if anybody would want to speak, let me know, and I'll let Marge know.
No, you should go ahead and, you should do that.
Okay. Thank you. Can't wait to tell Marge and Becky that one. Oh, Aaron left, but I was going to ask him about a list of the non-accepted roads in town.
Okay.
Some people ask questions about this street, I can say, "Oh, that's because it's not accepted yet, because the guy that owned the property, whack me, built the road, didn't want, you know, didn't pay into this, into that," and on and on and on. So just, he'll get that, I'll ask him to get it here, I was going to ask him, because he was sitting here. And then, you know, I know we talked about this for a minute before, last week, David mentioned it, last meeting. When we did the 129 Parker Street meeting, we had just, not that I'm advocating for different meetings or extra meetings, but we kind of just, anytime we met with those guys, after a point when we started to get into a true negotiations setting, we had separate meetings just for that purpose. You know, people were welcome to come, but we came in here, you know, we came in here, put the table in the middle, we sat on one side, they sat on the other, and we just hashed it out and worked through it that way, rather than with, on top of, you know, Comcast and Verizon hearing and that other stuff. We've done it that way in the past, I don't know if anybody has the stomach to want to do it that way now, but it seemed to, you know, work a lot smoother when we did it that way. We started to get a lot more done when we were doing it with a single focus in mind for those particular meetings, I don't know.
I think that's a good idea.
We did it that way before, still open, but, you know, just, it was easier.
So would you like me to propose possible dates for it?
Well, we can do it, we can do it, after we talk to.
Let's wait until, see what.
Till we talk to Adam and go through that, you know, go through his redlines, and some of the questions that each of us is going to have about, you know, actual, you know, the truth about, you know, we sat on that, we went to that luncheon about the mitigation things, and, you know, some of the things that David was talking about, and he actually said the same thing, was you can use that money for anything you want, it's just in those buckets, because that's where the conversation started. So anyway, just all that type of stuff we'll get from Adam, but we just did it that way for 129 Parker? Or Acton?
Parker.
Parker, right, Parker. So we did that, and it seemed to work pretty well, because you didn't have all the other stuff involved, but just like. No, typically, we're out here by 9 o'clock, this is an aberration. There's no games on tonight, there's nothing going on. Why don't I stay here till whenever? That's all I have, anybody else? Melissa?
I was just going to say, it was great to see voter turnout yesterday. It was one of the highest, I think, Maynard's ever had in a midterm election, so nice to see people in town getting engaged.
When did they tell us how many people we had that did the early voting and what that, those kinds of, those probably yesterday's numbers?
Probably be able to get that from a clerk.
I know the town clerk has those numbers.
Yeah.
Do we, has she posted?
I don't think she's posted anything.
She posted the numbers.
But not for the early voting, I don't think.
The numbers are out there, the total numbers are out there.
I knew she has that information, so we can.
I was just wondering, I was just, I just, as just a person in general, you know, was just kind of curious if the early vote numbers are included in the numbers that.
Yes, they are.
Yes.
Populated last night, so yeah, okay.
And the early voting was so well orchestrated, I think we did such a good job as a town.
Yeah, they did a nice job, yeah.
They said nationwide, they said nationwide, more people voted early this year than voted in 2014 in total.
Wow.
Across the country.
They're saying, so I talked to the, I talked to the assistant town clerk today, and I think the number voting was 5495, I think if I remember correctly. But we have around, and don't quote me on the number, we have under, we have under 8,000 total registered voters. So that's a, that's a huge number.
It was like 70 to 90% of eligible voters in all the surrounding towns, including us.
So that was very cool.
Which was awesome.
Okay. Anything else, ma'am?
No, that's all.
Justine, Justin?
Really? I had occasion to go to the, actually, with David, go to the Maynard Casino Night to support the Maynard Music Association on Saturday night, and again, as always, it was a great time. It still continues to show what a special town it is. There's a lot of people who come out and be involved, and they don't have to have Kids in the Music program, they don't have to, they just want to support Maynard in general, and it's always really nice to see.
David?
Yes, and I ended up losing, as I always do.
At least it's fake money.
129 Acton Street, Greg, can you ask Bill Nemzer, or whoever, or the building inspector, to look at the development agreement that we drafted with 129 Acton Street? There is supposed to be a "Welcome to Maynard" sign, and I won't get into the details of it, but it was supposed to be a significant $30,000 wall that said "Welcome to Maynard" on it, which evolved, what I understand.
A little sign, just a little sign.
There's no sign there at all.
We had voted on it, though, remember, Planning Board came with like, their proposal one night, like.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, they switched it from, now it's supposed to be some type of a sign that's just supposed to look like the one across the street, but they've still not completed it.
That was still a long time ago, though, that they came here, like, it must have been like eight or nine months ago.
Yeah.
It's not the original drawing of the sign, I know that.
Yeah, the sign was supposed to be in lieu of $30,000 in donation to our Affordable Housing Trust. We're going to give you a beautiful sign, and then it devolved down to this small little, you know.
The only sign on that is on the golf course there, right?
Yeah, it's not existing.
That's what I'm talking about, that's the only one.
It's supposed to be on the other side, as you, as you turn into Acton Street, it was supposed to be a curved wall. The way that he described it was very similar to the wall that they built at Parker Street, 129 Parker Street.
What they're doing now.
But it wasn't going to be that high, but it was going to be that type of a wall.
It looks like Masonry work, it's so impressive.
Let me look into it.
And they've never, they've never built it, but I just want to make sure, because one of the things, whenever we have a developer come in, historically, we have failed in making sure that they fulfill their obligations under development agreements.
That's true. Armin?
I had the privilege of sharing the day with Justine and Greg at the Zaxter Bike Sharing Program. I thought it was a very successful day, it was beautiful weather, it was a nice ride.
Did you ride?